Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the Clerk please call the roll so that we might establish a quorum?
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
Councilmember Getta is not online, but I expect him momentarily. And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Welcome to everyone. Happy New Year, first of all, and welcome to the members of the City Council, the city staff, and of course, most importantly, the public, the members of the community. We hope this year is a much better year than 2020, and that we all stay safe and healthy and return to our community and family life as quickly as possible. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask new councilmember Sean Laloie to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can stand, please do. If not, I understand. Go ahead. Councilmember, you're muted. Good, good. Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, members, we have two very important discussion items today, both relating to the preeminent issue of housing. And we will get to those issues in a moment, but we begin, of course, with the consent calendar where we have 13 items. Are there any items which any member would like to be removed from the consent calendar to be heard or talked about separately? All right? If not, can I get a motion and a second on the consent calendar?
Remove consent, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, thank you.
I will second that, Mayor.
Councilmember Jennings, thank you so much. Is there public testimony on any item on the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
There is no public testimony on the consent calendar.
Okay, then let us call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I please make a comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, of course, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. And I didn't want to pull anything from the calendar, but there are several finance items on the calendar which prompted me to reach out to Mr. Colville, our very qualified treasurer, to ask him if we have a policy about investing in fossil fuel projects and companies. And we have a policy on Wells Fargo and funds and ammo, but we don't have one on fossil fuel funds and divesting from those funds as a city, which is both a good financial choice and obviously good for our climate. So I was hoping that maybe staff at a future meeting could bring back some item where we could talk about a policy for divestment for the city.
All right, that's a good suggestion. Treasurer Colville, any, how long would that take for you to come back?
Mayor, we've actually been working on it since I talked with councilmember this weekend, and I have staff looking at alternatives. We don't own, we own a couple of direct investments in like Shell Corporation and some big fossil fuel companies, but we generally don't hold that many. The main problem is the benchmark. We benchmark the S and P 500, and 7% of that is energy companies. So we're looking at alternatives. So we can get back to you probably within a couple of weeks, I think, councilmembers. It should be quick and painless.
Thank you so much.
Good, good, good. Why don't you get back? You can get back by memo maybe or something with a, you know, what the findings are, what the alternatives might be, and then as appropriate or necessary, we can set, you know, the appropriate question for session. Is that all right?
Works for me.
Councilmember asked you over the weekend, and you have a tentative answer by Tuesday. And my question is, what took you so long?
I got a lot of home projects, Mayor.
Yeah, okay. Hey, good, good, good work. Thank you. Okay. Very good. Any other questions? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right, thank you very much. The consent calendar passes, and now we move to item 14, which is one of the two discussion items this evening. And ordinarily for the new members, usually the city staff reports on an item on the agenda, but under the city charter, the mayor has the authority to place an item on the agenda. And when he does, then it's appropriate for the mayor to make the presentation. And so that's, that's the case with this first very, very important item. So I do want to take a few minutes, and I want to lay out what, what this is about, my rationale, and where I recommend we go forward and how I recommend we go forward. But I'm going to say from the very beginning that the process I am about to outline, I hope and expect will be tweaked, improved by you, by the members of the City Council. My role as the mayor, as I see it, is to provoke and propose a big picture strategy for how we address major challenges. You, of course, have the right and ability to do the same, but as the citywide, the citywide elected official and mayor, it's especially my responsibility. And that's what I'm doing here. But I do it with the expectation and the invitation to you to improve upon it and to, and to own it and to help lead it. And so let me begin. Members, we begin a new calendar year, 2021. Of course, we're in the midst of a pandemic, which remains our most important city and societal priority to help our community get through this period of time with the least amount of pain and disruption as possible, where we recognize there's been a lot of pain and disruption already. This resolution before you is detailed, and my opinion, the most important line of the resolution can be found on page nine, section one, at the very beginning, where it states, "The City Council recognizes the urgent need to bring residents indoors with temporary and permanent shelter and housing solutions, and that in order to do so, a comprehensive citywide work program must be adopted to declare this effort," and here are the key words, "as a top priority for the Sacramento City Council in 2021." The city management, led by our great city manager Howard Chan, and the entire city staff, after four years here, I can say sometimes they wonder, and reasonably so, whether what we say is a priority truly is a priority. This resolution is written clearly and explicitly to state clearly that addressing affordable housing and homelessness must be a top tier city priority. The second most important line from the resolution can be found on also page nine, section four, where it says, "The City Council will collaborate with Sacramento County during the process to create the comprehensive master plan to collaborate on siting, funding, operations, and programmatic solutions that benefit residents of both jurisdictions." Why is that the second most important line? Because what I lay out here tonight is ambitious and necessarily so, but we can't do it alone. Tonight, we extend our hand to our county partners, our hands collectively to our county partners, to say that as we move forward with this work, we need you and we want to work with you. We had a great and positive experience with Project Room Key, and we can replicate that to the benefit of not just the city, but the entire county. And so why is this item, to establish a master plan for housing and the call for an affordable housing bond, why is this the first subject of the first meeting in this new year for this city council? We have many great challenges in our city, whether it be the gang problem, whether it be poverty, whether it be the issues of our neighborhoods, so many things for us to tackle in Sacramento. But when it comes to this issue of homelessness and housing, we are not alone among major cities in California. That's the good news. But neither are we immune from the impact of these issues for homelessness, mental illness, and drug addiction, separately and sometimes overlapping, are our most serious problems and the most severe challenges we face as a city. I believe it is not an overstatement to say that everything we aspire to, the revitalization of Sacramento, the building of a modern economy, inclusive economic development, all of it, all of it is threatened by this great challenge of unsheltered homelessness and affordable housing in the broader context. Thousands of people living in tent encampments is wrong. The growth of homelessness without aggressive action is immoral. The human suffering is unacceptable. Its effect on our businesses and our neighborhoods is growing in ways that have reached the breaking point. So I want to take just a moment, especially again for the new members and for people maybe tuning in for the first time, although you've all, you know, paid attention, I know, to talk about a little bit of the city's history around these issues and what brings us today. For prior to the last four years, the city did help fund some shelter. It launched an Office of Homeless Response and Intervention led by Emily Halken. But I also think it's fair to say that as a city, we did not lean in to homelessness as a major priority. The last four years have been different, not just because I became the mayor, but also as a matter of necessity. And while the problem is immense, I do think it is important to recognize what this city council has done over the last four years together in collaboration with our community. We have raised over $100 million, $64 million alone through the Whole Person Care Pilot, where we're the only city in the state, other than the city and county of Sacramento, who have applied and received $64 million grant. We received $21 million or so through the various HEAP, HAP, and CARES Act, the state initiatives, by the way, were at the behest of our leadership. We have built a number of shelters, the Tiny Home Project on Grove Avenue, the Planned Shelter for WX Freeway is pretty close now. It wasn't our fault. Trump and the federal government held it up. The irony of this despot, excuse me, pointing a finger at California to say, "You're not doing enough on homelessness," and then being the obstacle, his Federal Highway Administration, to allowing us to go forward, just plain gallant, 15 more days and it is over. What is the result of all of, all of that? Sacramento Steps Forward estimates that we have brought more than 5,000 unsheltered people into longer term housing together with Sacramento County, and 1,300 of it through Project Room Key. So it hasn't been a complete failure. Our effort and our intensity has actually paid some real dividends. But we must acknowledge that the problem in perception, and I think in reality, has also gotten worse. It has gotten worse. Now, some of that may be COVID, and some of it likely is COVID, but it's the fact that these tent encampments, which were once kind of a, an exception or a rare thing, are all over the city. And people living in squalor and living in very unhealthy and unsafe ways, and think about the middle of the winter, what it must be like. Then, of course, the impact on our larger community. And as I am my own best, I think, critic, constructive critic, and as I look at our performance over the last four years, this is what I see needs to change. Why did we approach it the way we did over the last four years? Here was what the mindset was. We didn't have money. We went after money. I went after money. I went after money as the chair of the big city mayors. I went after money with the private sector, Kaiser, $5 million. We went after, we put $20 million of City General Fund money into this effort. We went after money because we didn't have it. And when we got the money, we then took it, or at least anticipated it, and we matched it with specific projects and specific initiatives to get going. And that's exactly what we did. The problem, though, with the approach, at least in terms of continuing it as the approach, I think it was necessary as a starting point, is that every single time we seek to build a project, there is either a neighborhood controversy, or a specific financing challenge, or some other impediment, logistical, bureaucratic, timeliness, our own, our own constituents that sometimes say, "Solve it, but please don't solve it here," all of the above, and that we end up experiencing a death by 1,000 cuts. That's the best way I can put it. It's when you are having to address one initiative or even two initiatives at a time, you are fighting those same battles that take six to nine to 12 months, and you're so wrapped up in that battle that you can't engage in the next one until you finish the first or the second or the third one. So I got to thinking over the fall, and I don't remember the moment, but there was a moment where somehow I was thinking about being a city council member, District Six, Eric Ayers' district, and leading the Army Depot Reuse Commission back in 1993 and 1994, and thought about the federal government's BRAC process, where in the 90s, in the 80s and 90s, the Defense Department had to cut budgets. And part of the budget cutting involved closing a lot of these military bases around the country. The problem is, no member of Congress wanted their own military base closed, understandably. So there was no way Congress could pass a bill unless there was an up or down vote. So they set up a process where they decided on siting in the, this, I'm talking about closure, to an independent commission who made a series of recommendations. Then Congress, three times in the 80s and 90s, and I think one time in the 2000s, 2005, they voted to close, up or down, no amendments, a number of military bases. And they closed over 300 of them, including several, obviously, in our region as well. And everyone saw it as a fair process. So I thought about that and said, "What if we could do something like that here in Sacramento when it came to homeless siting?" And I don't want to turn this over to an independent commission, because I think that's a recipe for delay. I think we are the independent commission, frankly, the people who have been elected by our constituents, you by district, me citywide, to develop a master plan for siting, for operations, for financing, and do all of that work, instead of consecutively, project by project, do all of that upfront work over the first months of this year, with you in the lead in your districts, and with me leading, helping, participating, following, whatever it is you need and it takes, together with our city staff, which, by the way, we have more expertise than we've had before, and we have SHRA and their fine team, and that together, we grapple with these questions of siting especially, but also program, operation, and finance in public, which is a key component of this, in public, not behind closed doors. And that by no later than June 1st, we develop a master plan for siting, and we take an up or down vote. And once we take that up or down vote, yes, I know, I've been around a long time, we will still need approvals for the different projects based upon, you know, whatever regulatory thing is necessary, or whatever financing thing is necessary. But that vote would serve as the decision about where we are going to site, shelter, permanent supportive housing, scattered site, safe camping, safe parking, tiny homes, and all of the other strategies we are going to need in tandem in order to make a bigger impact and a bigger difference. And that we will no long, after that vote, we will no longer argue, we'll say the resolution, whether that site or those sites are appropriate. I believe that this approach, as modified by you, gives us a much better chance to make progress faster and to go farther than the ad hoc approach, which we used mostly out of necessity since we were just getting going. Where's the money going to come from? For the first time now, I have more confidence, especially with the new presidential administration, with Governor Nuance's commitment to housing and homelessness, with our own affordable housing finance strategy, which I will get to in a moment, that we are actually going to have the best chance ever to have a sustained source of research, sustained source of money to be able to not do everything at once, but to be able to move forward in an aggressive way. And I go back again to the county. The partnership with the county is so crucial because they are the holders of the Health and Human Services dollars. They're the holders of the Mental Health Services Act dollars, the Prop 63 dollars. They're the ones who did the exemplary job, really, on Project Room Key. We did a good job. The county led the way on Project Room Key. There was that great sense of urgency, and the federal government paid 75% of the cost. We got to see if we can replicate that going forward post-COVID. There's a lot of question out there about enforcement, and I want to just make this point because whether you're pro or anti enforcement, whether you lead with that or whether you think it isn't necessary if we, if we just provide more housing and services for people. No matter what side you come from, the same points of view can intersect on this question, because here's what Boise and all these, everything and our city attorney tell us. If we don't want people to camp in certain parts of the city, which I believe we have, we should have the right to do, we can only tell people they can't camp here if we are providing alternatives, whether they be alternatives with roofs, or safe camping, or safe parking lots. If we don't build capacity, everybody out there who's saying, "God darn, clean up XYZ," yes, you're right. If we don't have capacity to offer people alternatives, with some very limited exception, Boise and all the other cases tell us that a quote enforcement strategy, whether you agree with it or not, will not work. I want to shift, and then I'm going to be done, to the housing bond. As you know, in 2018, the voters of Sacramento passed Measure U, and those of us who remain on the city council from that time, who were there, know that we had some fierce debates about what that second half cent was intended for. I know what I intended it for, but I also know it was a general tax. I think if there was one area of pretty common agreement, it was that we need to create an affordable housing trust fund, because we have to have some skin in the game. We have to have some capital to be able to partner with the nonprofit housing community, the for-profit housing community, to be able to dramatically increase our affordable housing supply production. And so last year, we came pretty close, just before COVID, to launching the beginning of, the letting of an affordable housing bond. And we were halted, of course, for the obvious reason that COVID hit and our finances were in pretty bleak condition, at least that's what we anticipated. We're not out of the woods now. I know we're not financially, and we will deal with the budget in these coming months. But we're, I think, in better shape than at least what we anticipated. And so I think tonight is the time to set the direction by you and me to redo and expedite an affordable housing bond. And we talked about different combinations and variations of how to do various bonds. We talked about a capital improvement bond for the commercial corridors in the city that sometimes get forgotten. I'm suggesting, again, just me, I'm just putting it out, $100 million bond for affordable housing. Now, the truth is, I'm going to let out a little secret, because John Colville would anyways, which is that because interest rates have declined, if we were to set aside $7.5 million a year, which was kind of our working number for the payment of a bond, we actually get $140 million, not just 100. So we could take the other 40, if the council chose, and we could put it into other capital improvement projects related to inclusive economic development. Or we could do 140 for housing, or we could do less than $7.5 million a year and keep it at 100. This is for you and us to decide together. But I put it out there, $100 million, I think states a great commitment and can be the beginning of a funded affordable housing strategy in this community. And to tie the two together, in conclusion, we all know the truth of what I'm about to say. The best anti-homeless policy is to prevent homelessness in the first place. And how do we do that? We have, we're going to talk about tenant protection, I know, later tonight. We do have an ordinance on the books here that includes just cause for at least a significant cohort of tenants. But the other thing we all agree on is that we need to produce more affordable housing so that people have more options. And then we get into the housing innovation space so that we're on the cutting edge of participating in the construction of housing that's less expensive and, and that is unique, and that allows us to house more people. So that's what I bring before you tonight for discussion and direction. And if nothing else, what I would like to come out of this tonight is a clear statement from the city council that these sets of issues are a core priority for our city in 2021, so that there's no ambivalence about it, because that helps our city team to know where your heads are at as we begin this new year. I thank you for the few moments here to lay this out. I'm happy, of course, to answer any questions. The other part of this, of course, is a tentative schedule and work program outline, which is really important, because as you see, it emphasizes public workshops. And this is, I think, one piece I'm going to fight hard for, because if we don't do this work out in public, including the siting work, I know what's going to, with you guys in the lead, by the way, what's going to happen is there's going to be a lot of good intentions that just, that hit the old, what I call the old undertow. It's just gonna, it's just going to go slow, and staff is going to get mixed messages from community, from you as members, from, and we need clarity here, and they need clarity if we're going to put together a master plan that is binding. that is binding on each other, uh, and on our community. So the calendar here, uh, is important as well. Thank you to everybody who helped bring this together over these last weeks, especially my team. I want to thank Julia Burrows and Jacob Paitel, um, especially, and, uh, the city staff, um, you know, Danielle Foster and, and again, Michelle Dozier and everybody, and Howard, everybody that was involved in, um, in helping to put this together. Thank you very much. I'd open it up, you know, what, how many, um, members of the public do we have signed up to testify?
I have one caller signed up.
Okay, so new members, we do, you know, we've gone back and forth in doing this just depending on the thing. Would you prefer to have the council discussion first? Or would you, why don't we hear, we usually hear from the public after the presentation, and then we, and then we, uh, take it back to the council, right? Why don't we do that? Okay.
May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor Steinberg, for, uh, taking, uh, my question. My name is, uh, yeah, my name is, uh, Kent Lachin on District 3. And my question is, um, what happens? What, it, it's about what happens when we offer all these proposed shelter options to people experiencing homelessness? Uh, from what I understand, the Boise decision says that police cannot move homeless people unless there are available shelter beds. Now, I know of navigators who have repeatedly offered available beds to homeless people on the street, and the people have refused the offer. So since there are available beds, does that mean that the police will move homeless people off the streets if they decline to take the shelter beds? Or do the police have a policy that they will not move people off the streets under any circumstances? I would, I would just like to know what the policy is of the police on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, um, my name is Rebecca Sandoval, and I am, um, from District 3. My concern is, um, this commu, council-led community outreach program. I'm glad to see that that would be, um, an outreach program because in my area, last year, there was a proposal to build a shelter at a cost of $3.4 million for women and children up to the age of 18, living in overcrowded conditions. It would have been 50 sleeping cabins without plumbing, a communal kitchen and bathroom on North Gate Boulevard, 13 yards from the elementary school in a neighborhood that's already comprised of a large amount of affordable housing. I'm hoping that they will consider that that project claims an exemption from zoning and building codes because of the homeless designation. That, that exemption may be appropriate for Cal Expo Quantrum Huts, but it's definitely inappropriate for cabins for women and children. That exemption should be reviewed by proper authorities, and any proposals for similar cabins should include input from the target population, from the Sacramento County Zoning Code Enforcement and the Department of Health. The coronavirus epidemic shows us what health consequences result when people are crowded together under unhygienic conditions. We cannot create a situation dangerous to community health. And I'm hopeful that this information will be considered when, um, the, um, council-led, uh, community outreach program, um, takes into consideration the type of housing programs, uh, to be put in place. Uh, I am trustee for Twin Rivers. Garden Valley is one of my schools.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comments, please?
Yes, I am asking for the council to, um, not place a homeless shelter 13 yards from our mel, elementary school in the garden.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, this is Courtney. I live in District 4, so council member Valenzuela. Hello, welcome. And I'm calling, uh, with some optimism. I'm happy to see this, uh, resolution be the first thing on the agenda for 2021. So thank you for bringing this forward. And where I live in downtown Sacramento, I'd estimate that there's probably a half dozen tent slums within a mile and a half radius of my house. Yeah, I see unhoused neighbors every single day. I can't go more than a block without seeing somebody in distress. So thank you for taking this on. Um, I have a couple of points I wanted to raise. One, I did look through the, um, correspondence that was sent by Sacramento Area Congregation Together. And I appreciated their second point about an advisory committee uh, that includes people who have experienced homelessness or who advocate, uh, on behalf of people experiencing homelessness. And we worry maybe about committees slowing things down, but I think an advisory committee, um, of relevant stakeholders could be worked in on the existing timeline to weigh in and review the plan as it's being developed. And hopefully that would mean that thing to be implemented quicker after the plan is adopted. And then also, I appreciate, um, that the plan includes every district. And I'm curious, if there's any kind of accountability, I know that there are varying levels of NIMBYism in various parts of Sacramento. And I'm curious what mechanisms will be in place to make sure that every district really is fully engaged and every council member really is able to move forward meaningfully in their district. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor Steinberg and honorable members of the council. My name is Jenna Abbott, and I'm the executive director of the River District, which is located in District 3, Vice Mayor Harris's district. The River District would like to support, or express support of this, um, holistic plan. The concept of a fair share generated across the city is a very good one, and we are very happy to see this stance being taken by the council and the mayor. We support finding a way additionally to move quickly and identify safe parking and safe camping areas throughout the city. I say these things because the River District has become somewhat of a cautionary tale. We must move now, or we need to get right with the fact that more areas of the city of Sacramento will begin to look like the streets on the River District. We must work with, as you said, Mayor Steinberg, the county, nonprofits, and business districts. And I do believe that the most important among these i- is the county. As you said, they do have control of, of a lot of the funding, and we would really recommend and like to be part of that discussion with them. Please know that the River District stands ready and expects to be called upon to lend its significant experience towards solving this most grievous problem that exists throughout our city, in fact, throughout the nation. Um, we thank you very much for the opportunity to give you our comments, and we look forward to being part of the solution and the discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I just want to repeat, um, publicly. I think some folks missed the queue. They were pleasantly surprised that public comment got taken up so quickly. So just want to state that it would be open again for a couple of minutes.
Yes, the queues should be opened. It will be open for two more minutes. Um, just to remind, um, viewers that the queues do close when an agenda item begins. Um, you can get onto, into the queues as early as 5:00 PM when the meeting starts. Um, so I'll remind, remind the, the members that are watching now, it will be open for two more moment, two more minutes. Um, and then we do have a caller on the line. Welcome to the meeting, caller. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. City manager, Michael Alt, Downtown Partnership. Uh, wanted to absolutely take this opportunity to call in, to communicate. We're very encouraged by the proposal in front of you tonight. Uh, clearly Sacramento needs, um, new strategies to address homelessness. Uh, I think firsthand, we've seen the impacts of homelessness downtown, and we know ending homelessness must be a priority for Sacramento. There's really no question that new approaches need to be explored to bring the most vulnerable off our streets and indoors. We see it on a daily basis. This plan, when tied with services, has the potential to create new opportunities to coordinate and address the issues of homelessness in our community. We know shelters are intended to be short-term, but we must continue to emphasize transitioning these clients into permanent housing. As we've reiterated in previous discussions, it's critical that these shelters include wraparound services and resources to move individuals into more sustainable housing. There must be strong protocols to maintain health and safety while preventing impacts to existing neighborhoods. This includes robust outreach in impacted communities as an important first step and a critical component. Um, additionally, we can't stress enough how critical shelter standards are in any siting plan. We've seen firsthand downtown how critical this is to the success of any shelter for both the residence and its neighbors. Uh, homelessness really impacts everybody. We realize that. As this plan progresses, we must continue to move forward with immediate housing options to get people off the streets. Mayor, as you've said, we cannot afford to, to wait. We must see more shelter options available. We support new approaches to quickly move people off the streets from identifying immediate shelter opportunities to establishing designated camping areas. We have to identify and prioritize the top 200 chronically homeless in our city. Those are at most risk.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely. We need a regional solution for this. We need to engage the county. This will be a critical step. The Downtown Partnership is ready to work with you on this solution, and we thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, my name is Erin Johansson, and I'm the CEO of Hope Cooperative and the vice chair of the COC. I'm very pleased to support the master siting plan put forth in item number 14. Our organization has been supporting individuals with complex behavioral health issues who are also experiencing homelessness here in Sacramento for the last 40 years. I've personally been part of the COC board for almost seven years, and I'm really hopeful that the COC is very close to producing actionable data in the form of a systems and gaps analysis that will complement this plan you're proposing tonight. It's my fervent wish that as a community, we could commit to working collaboratively with all system partners to finally create a path to permanent housing for those who need it most. This will take all of us. The COC is ready to support your efforts here and to work side by side to create a system that is not overly complicated for those who need to access it, that has integrated outreach teams that truly work together towards common goals, finding housing for homeless people, and to create capacity in a system that has been way under capacity for as long as I've been at the table. This one change, making the path to developing affordable housing shorter and less expensive, is truly the missing link. Your plan to generate local funding and paving the way to avert the constant NIMBY pushback will address this one major obstacle that supports all the other efforts. And in the short term, let's find safe, sanitary places for people to be. The community wants this, homeless people need it, and it makes all our efforts more efficient when we can effectively engage people over time. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting, caller. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please address the council.
Yes.
Please begin.
Uh, you're very quiet. I can't hear you very well.
Please turn down the audio on the device that you're watching the council meeting. It's your turn to make comments.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Good evening. My name's Chris Smith, and I'm the secretary of the Marshall New Area Neighborhood Association. Our neighborhood is the area around Old Marshall School at 27th and G Streets. We support your efforts to create a long-term solution to the homeless problems, but have some concerns. I'd like to read you part of the letter from our board of directors. "To the City of Sacramento Council Members Regarding Homeless Encampment at 29th and C Streets. The Marshall New Area Neighborhood Association, MNENA, recently joined a meeting sponsored by the council member Valenzuela about the homeless encampments in our neighborhood, especially the one at 29th and C Streets. It's come to our attention that several of our neighbors have been vandalized and threatened by people who are living there. We formally request that Sacramento City Council take action to address the problems caused by this encampment. Until a long-term solution occurs, MNENA urges you to take action in our corner of Sacramento. If requested, we can gather a list of the problems that have occurred, but a cursory review of police reports, 911, and 311 calls will show that crime is occurring while we wait. Specific immediate actions need to occur, including prioritize response from police and city services to respond to calls in this area. Move portable lighting to illuminate the streets and alleys, especially along 29th Street between B and D and in Chinatown Alley. Camera installed on the 29th Street while an encampment is there. Key lock on Chinatown Alley. Increased police presence in the area, including having police vehicles park there when not on other calls. The city must consider spending more funds to protect those most negatively affected by the homeless camps and not just rely on existing services and programs. Also, the council should recognize that the neighboring residents are being terrorized, their security is being violated, and their rights to a peaceful neighborhood is denied to them. We look forward to helping you remove this blight on our neighborhood and keep our neighbors safe in their homes. The Marshall's New Area Neighbor Association will be happy to help in any way we can."
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, uh, Mayor Steinberg and Sacramento City Council members. Welcome to the new members of the city council. We're very excited to have you. My name is Christy Correa, and I am a SCIU Local 1000 Community Member Leader. I happen to organize a member group of the unhoused work group here in the Sacramento region. And I wanted to extend our gratitude for bringing this issue of homelessness to our city, and we are very excited about your plan. Uh, we were there at the meetings a couple of years ago when we were talking about the 100 pop-up bed shelters. And, um, you know, looking back over the last year and a half, we, we understand that there's been progress. We understand that there's been intense. We just are in a state right now where, as members and constituents and state workers that work and live in the downtown area, we are in a state of discontent with the, the status, the increased number of homeless, and the lack of actual implementation for solutions. So we are asking the council to please, as part of your master plan, to look at short-term goals for 2021. We want immediate assistance for the unhoused. Uh, there's thousands outside tonight. We're asking for, um, immediate implementations of sanitation and disinfection, uh, which includes garbage pickup, um, water, soap, bathrooms, warming, um, stations, solutions that are more temporary. We understand this plan is going to take time, and the vote's going to be in June, but we're asking you for immediate solutions to be implemented as well. We understand this is not just a city problem. This is a county and a state issue. We, our members are coming together, and we're going to be voicing our opinions to the county, and we are fully supportive of this plan. We're asking that you include members, um, and partners.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely. We're asking that you, you include experts such as nonprofits like Lobes and Fishes, Safe Grounds, SHOC, the Sacramento Homeless Union, and allow the experts that have been out there on the front lines to be part of your master plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Adrae Corle, and I am the policy director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. Uh, the Sacramento Housing Alliance supports, uh, this city effort to establish a comprehensive and actionable plan to address and prevent homelessness through the Master Sitting Operations Programmatic and Financing Plan. Uh, well, while working on this plan, action and support for people experiencing homelessness must continue and be strengthened. Uh, we must also ensure that people with lived experience are primary stakeholders in developing this plan. And central to this plan must be measures to address historic and systemic racism that have caused Indigenous, Black, Latinx, and other communities of color to disproportionately experience homelessness in this city. All of the strategies and actions in this plan must be incorporated and adopted into the city's housing element update. This is critical for transparency and to ensure coordination of all strategies and policies, including the state's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing now required under state law. We also continue to support an affordable housing bond and appreciate the proposals incorporation of a number of SHA's recommendations. incorporation of a number of SHA's recommendations. We also urge the mayor and council to dedicate 100 million towards an affordable housing bond. This crisis demands it. There are sufficient shovel-ready affordable developments to use the full 100 million, and accessing state affordable housing funds requires local funding. These local funds are essential so that affordable housing developers are competitive when they are applying for state funds. We look forward to picking up where the city left off and engaging us about other stakeholders in designing and implementing the bond program. Again, the pandemic has further exposed the impacts of historic and systemic racism in our communities. Black and Brown communities have borne the brunt of inequitable lending and land use practices, and the pandemic has strikingly revealed the health inequities as well. The city of Sacramento must ensure all public policies, programs, and actions included in this master plan are designed to address racial inequities and absolutely further human harm.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We urge the city council to revise the Master Sitting Operations Plan to address the pressing issues of systemic racism. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Robert Cooper. I live in District 4. I'm part of Sacramento Services and that Sweeps Coalition. I have a few questions. How much of that No Place Like Home fund that I think Mayor Steinberg supported has been spent? Two, what are you going to do about the vacant housing that's in Sacramento City? Three, stop the sweeps? Four, I'd like to see all funds spent on homelessness? And I agree with a lot of what Christy Korea said. And I can go on and on and on. Plus, we need more affordable housing. Why didn't you do this four years ago, Mayor Steinberg, instead of now? I haven't come to the city council since Mayor Johnson was mayor, and the problem's gotten worse. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi there, City Council, calling in from District 4, the newly-elected councilwoman in Venezuela's district. And I wanted to commend you for finally coming through with something, a proposal of a master plan to actually address a crisis that has been affecting Sacramento City for much longer than just COVID. In fact, it's been so many, like, years, literally since I moved here back in 2016, that this has been a crisis. And it's kind of funny that I hear how Mayor Steinberg says that he really looks for the money, even as back just two years ago, the city council had approved more than $300, to issue more than $350 million in bonds to renovate, nonessential renovation for the Sacramento Convention Center that is now the Safe Credit Union Convention Center. So really hope that you're actually looking harder for the money than you did back then through this plan. I'm going to take you at your word on that, but honestly, not really. So a couple of things I want to make that I think definitely need to be addressed before you really go into this master plan, particularly the warming centers. It's been, like, it may not have hit 32 degrees more than a couple of days, but it has been freezing for many people that are living out there, and it's been raining consistently. And that's not something that you need to wait for this plan to get through until June in order to have this actually occur. You can pass an emergency ordinance right now, some kind of measure, in order to open these warming centers immediately and get more than just 30 people into those warming centers at a time. This is, like, in a
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I'm going to trust the newly-elected members of this council to really push hard and work hard on this, but I don't trust any of the rest of you that have been on here longer than 2020 on this.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Lisa Bates, the CEO of Sacramento Steps Forward, the lead agency for your homeless continuum of care. Would like to share my appreciation of your continued and dedicated focus and leadership to address homelessness in Sacramento and your commitment to pre-approve locations and financing for much-needed housing and immediate sheltering. We've seen the devastating effects of NIMBYism with the loss of two potential home key projects in this county and hundreds of very much-needed permanent affordable housing that would have served the most vulnerable and in need. As a key leader with the city and the county on the COVID response effort and Project Room Key, we know the power of collaborative action. As a reminder, the Sacramento Continuum of Care, a representative body of homeless service providers, business associations, health partners, law enforcement, city and county staff, is completing an in-depth assessment of the system's performance and shortfalls. We are hopeful and suggest that the results of this analysis be incorporated into your upcoming council workshops. This month, the COC will convene a 20-member Racial Equity Committee of Black Indigenous People of Color and Persons with Lived Homelessness Experience, with a mission to develop an action plan for how to address the disparate impacts of systemic and structural inequities. The COC we offer has a structure that can help bring recommendations informed by this experience to your process. To conclude, we would like to offer three immediate areas of support. One, be available to work with each of you and your staff as you convene district meetings and have availability of either our own staff, our data, and the homeless system response context, as you may need or see fit for your conversations in your districts. At future council workshops, have available and be available to present data and system level context as well as
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
That are coming from the COC to help support your decisions. We stand ready to support and assist you in every way that we can in this very important effort. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is PJ, District 4. I strongly endorse this as long as it is thought out and a holistic approach that actually helps the unhoused and isn't just a way to give money to rich developers. We need to end the seemingly endless NIMBYism in this city. Everyone wants to throw a dollar at the problem, and no one seems to want to do the work necessary to ensure our unhoused neighbors get access to the services they need, the consistency of a safe place to rest and store their belongings, and to stay safe in the middle of this pandemic, and to do all of this without fear of having every earthly possession they have be swept up by police responding to an annoyed neighbor, entirely disrupting their lives because a neighbor got annoyed at the reality of their existence, and a police force willing and ready to criminalize their existence, and if they're lucky, provide a few sources for a day or two while in jail, and then back to a complete lack of resources, lack of accountability, and a lack of humanity for those currently experiencing being unhoused. In that vein, we need to fix the warming and cooling centers. The requirements are too extreme, and the reality of negative health impacts starting at much cooler and warmer temperatures respectively needs to be taken into consideration. I would ask that health services make a recommendation based on where human beings start feeling the health effects of cold, not only taking into consideration temperature, but also wind chill, recent rain, and relative humidity. And along with thoughtful consideration of where unhoused neighbors can reside, we also need thoughtful services in those areas for access to methods of transportation to access services. I heard for a long time suggestions of sticking these people out in the hinterlands of Sacramento. How does that make sense if the services they need are primarily located in the central city? I would ask that those sorts of considerations and holistic approach be used in addressing this issue. It's only going to get worse before it gets better, as tens of millions of people across this country are thrown out on the street as rent moratoriums end, and even if given time, many who have been without work or on a lesser schedules face 10 months of back rent. And that's assuming they don't have one of the thousands of landlords who have preemptively filed eviction just waiting for the moratorium to end.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
In the meantime, we need a triage system. We need a way to provide them a safe place to take showers, to bathe, to have trash, and to be able to store their belongings without fear of being attacked by police.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, councilmembers. Eddie Franco. I'm a member of SAC-SUPE, that's Solidarity of Unhoused People. We're a coalition here in the city that has been engaged in just direct mutual aid and assistance to our unhoused community here in Sacramento for the last few months. I first wanted to acknowledge that we're excited to support this measure today. We also want to acknowledge that the city has stepped up in many ways to fill gaps where we've seen deficiencies from other jurisdictions, be it federal, county, et cetera. Also want to acknowledge and underscore something you actually highlighted earlier, Mayor, which is that many of the comprehensive solutions we're going to need is going to take close collaboration between the city and the county specifically. We are really looking forward to engaging in that collaboration as well. Also want to highlight that while we're excited about this, there are also immediate needs that need to happen now. They can't wait till June. We actually submitted seven comprehensive recommendations that we believe can be taken immediately in the short term, but I'm going to highlight two here on the phone. First is to broaden the warming center initiative. The one warming center on I Street is simply not enough. Not only that, but the criteria are far too restrictive. It shouldn't only just be based on temperature, but we should take into account weather, wind chill, et cetera. Also, more guidance and heads up for advocates on how these are actually being rolled out would be great so that we can actually communicate that to the community in a timely manner and let them know. The second thing I'm going to highlight is COVID safety and prevention, and this is obviously something that's going to be very much in tandem with the county, but there just needs to be increased testing, add encampments, and then proper follow-up for those positive cases, making sure they're quarantining at Cal Expo, reinstitute the handwashing stations and porta-potties that we've unfortunately seen taken out in the last couple of weeks because of CARES funding. And finally, prioritize vaccinations for camp workers if possible, specifically in that Tier 1B.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah. Thankfully, encampments have not been super exposed. We'd like to keep it that way, so having vaccinations for folks going out there would be helpful. Again, looking forward to collaborating together in the weeks and months ahead.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Evan Minton. I appreciate your renewed energy in this matter, Mayor, and I hope that these proposals come to fruition and only get stronger in the process. Some, of course, can be implemented immediately. I also want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela for her leadership on this issue in her very short time so far in office. I agree with you, Mayor, that the only way that we should displace our unhoused community members is if our leaders secure an alternative place for them to go. Not only do the courts say that this is an imperative, but so do the Centers for Disease Control in response to stopping the spread of COVID. I believe that our humanity tells us to do the same. We need to actually care about our unhoused neighbors. We need to see them as part of our human family, because they are. I want to take a minute to address your proposal, Mayor, about warming centers. This is important because one unhoused individual that we know of has already died on the streets this year because they froze to death. Thank you for your first step forward in this regard. However, as I'm sure that anyone can agree, one warming center open to 30 individuals is not nearly enough. We need more and in more places than just midtown. Currently, the warming center is six to seven miles away from encampments where our unhoused community members reside. To try to ensure that less people will die, we also need to loosen the criteria for opening a warming center, as previous callers have mentioned. Finally, please give clear guidance to advocates like SAC-SUPE, who have been working with the unhoused community members since the start of COVID on how they can communicate the warming center hours and give far more notice than the current 48 hours. We know weather conditions further out than that. And lastly, if we think that our unhoused crisis is bad now, what are we going to do when the eviction moratorium ends this February? Thank you so much for allowing me to share my thoughts with you tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, all. My name is Ibrahim, and I'm an organizer with Ace, a California community empowerment. I am happy, excited that we are having this conversation. Welcome today. It's nice to see you, Honorable Councilmember Katie and Mike. I'm excited for us to come, but I want to take a minute to acknowledge where we're at and to underscore this. I want to share a verse from the Quran. Allah (SWT) says, "وَمَنْ قَتَلَ نَفْسًا بِغَيْرِ نَفْسٍ أَوْ فَسَادٍ فِي الْأَرْضِ فَكَأَنَّمَا قَتَلَ النَّاسَ جَمِيعًا وَمَنْ أَحْيَاهَا فَكَأَنَّمَا أَحْيَنَّا النَّاسَ جَمِيعًا." God is saying that whoever takes a life, except for his soul, to stop corruption in the land, it's as if he has slain all of mankind. Whoever saves a life, it's as if he has slain all of mankind. And I say that to underscore the importance of recognizing that it's amazing that we're in this place and we're having this conversation, but we need to recognize that we are so late that someone lost their life last night, and that wasn't even the first person or the second person or the third person in the last couple of weeks. And so I urge us to move from a place of urgency, and I really, I can't acknowledge the hurdles of infrastructure, of bureaucracy, of funding, of convincing businesses and people in these neighborhood associations, but all of that pales in comparison to the gravity of a human life being lost because we cannot provide adequate shelter. And to add to that, I think it's important that our warming centers are opened up. One is not enough for 30 individuals, or that is not enough, and there's no communication with the advocates on the ground, then it's not an initiative that is actually having an impact and people are losing their lives. And also, stop the sweeps.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely. Stop the sweeps and make sure that we house all unhoused, especially with all the vacancies that we have in Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is John Foley. I live in District 5. A pleasure to talk with you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council about this important issue. I serve as a member of the governing board of the Continuum of Care, and I have the honor of being the chairperson of the Coordinated Entry Committee of that board, which the city also, of course, participates in. I'm pleased with the enthusiasm that the mayor brings to this issue and the leadership that he has, but I'm also pleased that there continues to be recognition that this needs to be a partnership to include Sacramento County, the other smaller cities in the county, and SHRA, as well as Sacramento County. We need to work together because each of us has different levels of capacity and different levels of funding. It turns out that with coordinated entry, we're only able to refer into about a quarter of the available permanent supportive housing programs in Sacramento County because the others are funded by these other entities, and it makes it hard to be coordinated when we're only doing a quarter of it. We have decided to put some real money into supporting 211 as an access point because of the frustration that people have had in trying to understand what's available and how to get into it. And so we'll be hiring a few additional staff there and a couple of additional staff using some state funds to beef up what Steps Forward's able to do to help coordinate that. And we're looking forward to partnering with the city as you go forward so that all of these efforts are understood and broadly supported and identified publicly so that a person who's experiencing homelessness or a person trying to help that person will know how to get help. So thank you again for your enthusiasm, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, City Council. My name is Felisa. I am a local to South Sacramento. I am a social worker, and I'm a part of Neighbor Program, an organization that feeds about 300 to 400 unhoused community members every other Sunday. I have so much to say, but I first want to say that you all make decisions. You all make policies and laws and budgets that affect the lives and well-being. You all make policies and laws and budgets that affect the lives and well-being of people. And this is why people are unhoused in Sacramento, because of the decisions that you make. They're in this position because of you, right? And if you all cared so much about unhoused folks, in what ways did you make this meeting accessible to them? In what ways did you make unhoused members know that you were having this conversation tonight, a conversation that affects the lives and well-being of unhoused people, right? I can't give you answers. I serve unhoused folks, and I can't give you any solutions because I'm not unhoused and I'm not going to speak for them. And you need to start making these things accessible because you're over here pulling solutions out of your ass when you're so disconnected from the people that you are serving. You are so disconnected from the reality of what they're living because you're over here making decisions, saying we can't open warming centers until 30 degrees. Okay, Mayor Steinberg, go live outside in a tent in 50 degrees and tell me how cold it is. I don't understand. Actually, I do understand because this is what the system is. This is settler colonialism. So I'm not surprised here. But all I really can say today, from what I know, from what I've served folks, is the one, they need a house. People, you're so, you don't understand why people don't want hotels. It's because people
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Two minutes is not enough. And also, stop the fucking sweeps and stop your pit.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mike Chesky, representing Sacramento Area Congregations Together Committee on Homelessness and Housing. I'm a city resident in Mr. Gara's District 6. I'm also a member of the governing board of the Sacramento COC. SACDACT submitted a formal letter via email to council members and three comments to the public record, which I'll summarize for you. SACDACT supports the development of a master siting plan. Finding appropriate locations for various kinds of shelter and housing is clearly critical to both getting unsheltered people off the streets and into programs that can provide the support they need. Zoning and designation of such sites is obviously essential to actual development. However, this is only one part of a comprehensive collaborative plan to end homelessness in our community, as John Foley outlined, other complexities. We have three recommendations for helping to assure that the effort before you today to designate locations and smooth their development path is actually accomplished by June. First, clarify the scope of this effort to focus on the identification of sites and the mechanism to assure such sites can be developed expeditiously. Section 7 of the resolution brings in operational and programmatic dimensions, which we believe cannot be accomplished by June 2021, and should involve other organizations in a more collaborative process than is proposed here. Second, modify the language of Section 5 of the resolution to direct the city manager to create an advisory committee and use it in developing the draft plan. We enumerated many of the stakeholder types in our written comments, and to this should be added the Sacramento COC and its lead agency, Sacramento Steps Forward. They have the expertise to contribute to and improve the process. And finally, use the expertise of the COC and SSF as a source to determine the amount of shelter and other capacity that's needed.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
In summary, SACDACT has been calling for years for the development and adoption of a comprehensive collaborative plan to end homelessness in our community, narrowing the scope to just a master siting plan and accomplishing that by June 2021.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ansel Lundberg. I'm a District 3 resident in Sacramento, and I'm a co-chair of House Sacramento. We're the local YIMBY group working on ending our region's housing shortage and planning for more infill, transit-oriented housing for all people. I just want to call tonight to express our support for the direction of the city's proposed master plan to address homelessness. Obviously, it's a massive issue, and the city needs to continue working on this in a big way to give our neighbors decent places to sleep and to live. I'm not going to speak specifically to the need or that urgency of this plan and the actions that will follow. Advocates before me have spoken very clearly and effectively on the need for humane treatment of all people, no matter their housing status. I do want to say on siting, House Sacramento has come out in support of the WX and Mettaview and other shelters, but we do support this approach for a larger, broader vision for addressing homelessness instead of project-by-project approach. House Sacramento, we will say yes in my backyard to shelters throughout the city as the planning process takes place. I would love a site near our home in East Sacramento. Affordable housing bond, I also want to say that that's a great idea that was brought up last year but was shelved for obvious reasons with the pandemic. We need more of that affordable housing production, and in a few weeks, the council will be able to vote on the new land use proposal to make sure that we have a place to put all of that affordable housing that we can build with the bond fund. But thank you very much for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council staff, and members of the public. My name is Bay Mary, and I'm a resident and local developer here in the city. I'm calling to convey my support for the proposed master plan to address homelessness. I wanted to thank the mayor and the council for their willingness to consider an innovative approach in order to create long-term solutions to our challenging homeless issues. I look forward to continuing to work with the council and my colleagues in the business community to come up with additional solutions, both long and short term. I also look forward to working with council and my colleagues on solutions to anti-business and aggressive behavior, which negatively impacts our city budget and tax base. This differs in many ways with ensuring we create long-term solutions to the homeless issue, but is an appropriate and separate issue to discuss hand in hand. Without city budget and tax base, long-term homeless solutions cannot be resolved. If a customer does not feel comfortable buying lunch, or a hotel guest does not feel comfortable staying the night, then we can't generate funding to help us with long-term solutions of creating more shelters and providing more services. Therefore, additional funding as well as tweaks to ordinances in order to help us better respond to major clean and safe issues is necessary. Again, a balanced approach of both long and short-term solutions is necessary. My appreciation goes out to the council for continued leadership and resiliency during such challenging times. Again, I support the master plan to address homelessness before us tonight, and I look forward to a strong rebound throughout 2021 and beyond as we overcome this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District 5, calling in. You know, I'm going to say this for the three new members and for other people that have called in, you know, like wondering where sites can be located in the city. I just want everyone to know that well over two years ago, Kimberley Church brought forth a list to the entire city council, a list of all the vacant properties and lots and every zip code in the city of Sacramento, and also gave the entire city council a list of a provider that builds tiny homes for right about $5,000 apiece. And you know, all that was swept under the rug. We could have had a lot of this issue taken care of a long time ago, or at least a good chunk of it, had this plan been considered and been implemented. And it leads to this. As everyone knows, most people know, we have a very, very serious problem up on the river north of 35th Avenue. This problem is spilling over into three city council districts. And you know, with the full understanding that there's a lot of problems in this city everywhere, if a lot of this problem, if safe ground camping and parking had been open two years ago, when it was more than obvious that there were adequate sites and facilities and lots and stuff to do safe ground parking, or maybe open up vacant buildings or lots or whatever, we wouldn't be sweeping people out of City Council District 6 in the name of rich developers and forcing them out into other city council districts, most likely ending up here in District 4, 5, and 7. So, you know, as the gentleman said from the 27th and G neighborhood, the residents of South Land Park and Little Pocket and the surrounding Greenhaven Pocket area and South Hills Estates are tired of the people up on the levee. Our neighborhood is getting trashed. There's increases in crime. Windows and windshield are getting knocked out of cars.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, we need action now. Every city council district needs to share the pain. We need relief in South Land Park.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And council, we have five more callers. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi there, everybody. This is Joe Smith, the advocacy director with Loaves and Fishes. I'm also a board member with Sacramento Street Medicine and the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee and a member of Sacramento Services, not sweeps. And I'll support any plan or activity that results in real solutions for unhoused Sacramentoans, particularly solutions that include bringing the unhoused community to the planning table. I've spoken with many of you on the council. You know how enthusiastic I am? I'm ready to help any way I can, but, and there's always a but, I do have two requests that I believe require immediate attention. And I hope before the end of the meeting, you can instruct the city staff, first of all, please instruct all city departments to stop sweeping encampments where folks are sheltering in place. It's dangerous. It could lead to the spread of the virus. It's happened twice in the River District near Loaves and Fishes during December, and it's been happening all throughout Sacramento, from Morrison Creek to Roseville Road and all points in between. People are being told to move without any clear instructions of where to go. For, this is an example, a young lady was in the area around Loaves and Fishes the last two weeks of December. I recently found out she'd been tested positive for COVID. Just a few days after Christmas, the entire block along Ahern was told they had to move, and now they've dispersed throughout the neighborhood. So the one thing we're really trying to avoid, everybody, is to not disperse people from where they stay. It's putting everybody at risk. The second is, we need to have safe parking and safe camping sites immediately and supply those camps with necessary sanitation, garbage pickup, food and water. It's going to take a long time for this plan to be developed and even longer to get it implemented, but we need solutions right now to keep people safe. So, thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Hi, this is Jennifer Fearing, a District 6 resident and a nonprofit advocate. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members, and particularly, particularly like to give a hearty welcome to the new leaders on the council. I share the gratitude that others have expressed that this is the first item on your 2021 agenda. And I'd like to also acknowledge and appreciate the remarks of my friend and colleague Evan Minton, and so I won't repeat that I do endorse the comments that he made earlier. But I am in full support of a comprehensive plan to address and help our city's unsheltered residents as soon as possible. As a longtime Elmhurst homeowner, I also support the aggressive building of not only more shelters and 24/7 warming and cooling centers for our unhoused neighbors, but also the building of additional affordable housing units and the permitting of multi-unit housing throughout Sacramento, including in our neighborhood. And I will be back in a couple of weeks to restate that support. My family would support an even more aggressive timeline for the addressing of our unhoused neighbors' challenges. We've got to move quickly. This tragedy is an ongoing and growing travesty. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Thomas. I'm not going to tell you what district because this is a citywide issue that every district representative auto-endorses. You know, I can't think in the last 60 years, a more difficult time for the mayor and city council. We have three major issues: the coronavirus, which I think we're going the right direction, the homeless, and economic recovery. I support the mayor's proposal regarding long-term selection and movement to a master plan, but that is six to nine months out. I think it's conditional upon the fact we need to have some immediate relief for temporary housing with wraparound services for the homeless until your plan is adopted. I also believe that if you look at the history of the last 60 years, every issue that was a county-wide significant, whether it was flood control, whether it was regional sanitation, was solved by JPA with the county. The county is the engine because they have the funding for homeless services, and I would highly recommend you look at a JPA. Absent immediate action to resolve homeless, we can't get to economic recovery and the protection of our neighborhoods. And we need to move quickly on approving the mayor's plan for a long-term solution, but we need to move quickly on providing immediate access to safe campgrounds to house the homeless with wraparound services. Our neighborhoods and our business community rely upon that. So it's time for the council to join the mayor and look at this as a countywide issue and not a district issue. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a long history with the city, and I'm very proud of being a city resident.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Katie Maple, and I'm a resident of District 5, as well as a co-founder of SAC-SUPE. As you may know, because others have mentioned it, SAC-SUPE is a nonprofit that began at the outset of the pandemic, which provides direct mutual aid for the unhoused community. First of all, I want to say thank you. I acknowledge that the vast majority of funds and responsibility for human services and public health does not fall on the city, but the city has stepped up over the years to provide services, shelter, and other needs. As the situation worsens on our streets, it is imperative that the city and county work together in a meaningful way. A master plan that is developed transparently, is well-funded, and is inclusive, is the right next step. With that said, in order to address the dire humanitarian crisis that exists as I speak, we believe some immediate actions must be taken to preserve human life and health during this process. We ask that you do a few things that are all listed in our letter, but I'll list a few here as well. One, open more warming shelters with lower barriers. As others have mentioned, you know, having one in midtown is not enough. Providing PPE to camp workers and volunteers is essential. Provide consistent follow-up care for those who have been able to access services. Many people go into hotels or shelters for just a short period of time and then are let back out into the situation that they were in. Number four, allow people to self-refer to services. Currently, they're not allowed to do that, and it's difficult for folks that can't access folks to refer them. Number five, stop the discharge of patients from hospitals onto the streets. This one I feel very strongly about as someone who's seen someone with a hospital bracelet on the sidewalk in the cold. It's one of the most traumatic things you can see. So I just, I hope that we can find a solution where people don't get immediately discharged from the hospital and go back out onto the streets, especially into the cold. Again, thank you so much for making this a top priority. I know this is the number one issue for so many people in Sacramento, so thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
All right, thank you. Am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thanks. All right, wow, that hold music is terrible. Maybe the council can address that sometime. It's a little tough after an hour of dealing with that music. Resident, District 7, business, District 3. Overall, $100 billion for homelessness is a big ask. I think what you have here is a situation of too much carrot and not enough stick. I would encourage the council to look more into the Martin v. Boise case. All hinges on unavoidable consequences of what status they're being. A lot of these folks have made avoidable choices and therefore have ended up in this situation. There are unavoidable consequences, but additional provision of free stuff eradicates the ability for folks to get motivated to move on into better places. Free internet, free housing, free phone. Eventually, you deteriorate. Eventually, you deteriorate the work ethic. Speaking personally, I was homeless for two years. It's lousy. It is not a good time. Thankfully, I did not have free internet. Thankfully, I did also have not free housing, and I wanted to motivate myself. Others will not have that motivation. Please understand that I give thirty-four percent of all my gross income in terms of taxes, and many of us do. To continue to fund what is eventually going to become intergenerational parasites on the city needs to stop. There is effective code enforcement and health and safety regulations that can remove the encampments that fills the debris. It's clogging the American River, the Cloverleafs. In terms of the great state of California, Sacramento no longer represents a true capital city, neither by appearance nor deed. It is deplorable that we've gone this far. If this is a race for Stockton to the bottom, so be it. It's an unfortunate situation. You have cities like Manteca and Clovis. I'm sure they're a little cowboy, but they're effective. They've maintained the quality of life of the taxpayers that fund everyone's salary and all of the services and the potential one-hundred-million-dollar bond that's being idea today. I drew truly, truly.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Again, just to reiterate, less carrot, more stick. There are enforcement mechanisms to clean up the city.
Thank you for your comments.
And motivate them. Thank you.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and the city council. This is Pastor James Bow, a voice from the past. But I wish and pray you all a happy new year and that your families are all healthy and prospering. Um, as you know, I spent probably a hundred and fifty Tuesday nights every week coming to speak to council in regards, uh, in, in regard to advocate for, for more resources, more care and more housing temporary and affordable long-term housing for the homeless. I just want to say it was encouraging on KFBK yesterday to hear that the city council and you, Mayor Steinberg, as a leader of leaders, uh, were proposing a, or overall overarching long-term general plan for the citing, to find sites for, uh, sheltering the homeless as well as for coordinating the resources. They say a aircraft carrier, a five-thousand-foot aircraft carrier takes five miles to turn around, and you did not create this crisis, but facing it is something that God is counting on you and the city council to do. So I'm heartily in favor of the plan. I just want to read some words from King Solomon, three thousand years old. "If you forbear to deliver them that are drawn unto death," Proverbs 24:11. "If you hold back or forbear to deliver those that are drawn unto death and those that are ready to be slain if you say defeat."
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I tell thank you. "Does not he that ponders the heart consider it? He that keeps your soul, does he not know it? And shall he not lend it to every man according to his works?"
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Great to hear from you again. I hope you're well.
Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers on this item.
All right. Uh, I thought that was really a great representation of, of public testimony, um, and we really appreciate people, uh, calling in and, and being patient, um, you know, with the phones and all. So now, let's turn it over to the city council. And again, before we get through, and I'll come back around to this after hearing from you, I do want to talk about the calendar itself and sort of the intended process here because I want to make sure that the council buys in or has suggestion, suggested changes to the specifics in terms of, of how we're suggesting to proceed. But let, let's go. We've got, whose hands up? I got, I, I see Councilmember Valenzuela's, uh, virtual hand, uh, is up, and, uh, yeah, I'll know how to, how to do the hand raise here on the... Okay, well, either that or you can text me or text, uh, City Clerk, Wendy Capi, and everyone will be heard. But let, let's start with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, and thank you, everybody, for staying on hold and giving comments tonight. I really appreciate this discussion tonight. I know I've been pretty vocal about my surprise that we didn't have a current plan we were working under. I think the last plan was over a decade ago by then Mayor Heather Fargo and then Supervisor Roger Dickinson, so, um, it's definitely a conversation I think is long overdue. Um, and on December ninth, the mayor joined me for the first meeting in my district about this issue, and I think what you heard tonight and the comments from folks from the district, from business districts to neighbors to service providers, is that we're ready. We're ready to do it. We're ready to do it on this timeline, and we want to come up with solutions. So I hope my colleagues will, will join me in accepting that challenge. I do have three additional points that I want to bring in for a conversation and perhaps addition to the resolution, um, if that's okay with everybody. First, I do, um, I need to start by grounding in the fact that in my district, as was mentioned in a couple of calls, there was a sixty-five-year-old person found dead in front of the Heart Senior Center, um, on a too cold night, on a too wet night, um, in a condition that barely, um, any of us could, uh, who are younger could have survived. Um, this is, it's so frustrating, call after call. I mean, I knew I had to expect that when I got elected, that folks were going to be calling, but so ardently looking for something that they can do. Concerned citizen after concerned citizen, what do we do? Where can they go? And to not be able to tell them anything is just endlessly frustrating and, and heartbreaking because then you are coupling that with the fact that folks are dying right now, that folks are being victimized, that women on the street are being victimized, that people of color are running up on the street at higher rates. Like, this is an unacceptable situation, and so I really want to start my first point around the urgency that several colleagues, um, and people on the calls, um, expressed. I hope that we can maybe come back as soon as next week. I know we shelved the short-term shelter ordinance, which was the ordinance that would create safe parking and camping, um, in the city. I know there's other things that we can and should be talking about, including broader criteria for winter shelters, including other steps that we can take now. We really can't wait, um, until June to start some of these intermediate steps. So how can we get people through the next six months? Um, and what can that look like? And can we start that conversation and make some decisions on that next week? Because folks in my district are ready to start figuring out safe camping and safe parking and whatever we need to do to stabilize things right now. The second point I want to bring up is I am a little concerned about a bond, um, not because I disagree with the bond in concept, but because I know we've already taken on a lot, um, in sort of uncertain financial times with the golden one payments, not just from lost parking revenue, but also from the fact that the Kings, I've learned recently, don't need to make lease payments when they're not playing home games. And so we're having to cover both of those payments right now as a city, and so I'm a little nervous about the finances of bringing on a new bond, and I just want to make sure that Mr. Colville will return back to the council after they, he does the stress test and the other analysis before he actually starts selling bonds. I know, I think that was probably implied in this, but I wasn't sure because it wasn't said, so I wanted to make sure that was super clear.
Yes, that is absolutely part of the motion, okay?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, so now I only have two things to add. Okay, so the last thing that I want to bring up is, um, regarding the bond that, um, you know, the decision that was made in 2013 to change inclusionary housing really slowed production of affordable units, and I think the report does a good job of talking about only about two units for extremely low-income folks. I mean, those are the folks on SSI and disability that were trying to move off of the street, um, and we could also be doing more, as we'll talk about in the next item, to prevent folks from becoming homeless in the first place. So I want to make it super clear that in addition to the bond, we're open to looking at other ways of producing and preserving affordable housing, including potentially talking about developer requirements and what that would look like to potentially bring back something like inclusionary. So I just want to make sure that option and that conversation stays on the table as we're talking about it, because we do need to talk about building more units, and a bond could be a really important part of that, but I think we'll never be able to buy our way out of this, um, and we need to start talking about other creative things like Community Opportunity to Purchase Act, things that other jurisdictions are doing that are showing a lot of promise at bringing more units, um, into the affordable decks. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, let it, I'm sorry, I'm going to look at the list in order here. Um, Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, um, ever since I was elected six years ago, homelessness has been the topic of discussion and a very prominent one. Looking for sites is nothing new. I certainly have spent a lot of time doing it. Jay Shiniras as well, other council members. It is very challenging, and I appreciate the idea of bringing a master plan forward because doing the one-offs has proved, proven to be very challenging, as evidenced by the comments of some of the callers tonight. I, I want to assure some of the callers that we're not working in a vacuum, and we haven't stopped working on citing just because, uh, we had a, a holiday break. You know, as we're, as we speak, uh, we will soon take possession of, of several hygiene trailers, uh, bathrooms with lavatories on trailers, a shower trailer, an ADA accessible trailer. All of these can serve to, uh, support parking safe ground or just camping safe ground. And so I have been actively looking for sites, uh, and working with Bridget Dean from the Office of Community Response, uh, to locate sites, and we think we have a couple of viable ones. People are absolutely right that creating this master plan doesn't solve the short-term need, and I believe that safe ground is a bridge that we need to pursue, and I think that we can use some advocates to help us through this as well, to run some safe ground sites. So I'm a big supporter of that. I've been talking to Hope for Sacramento about Haven for Hope type model. I've talked to you, Mayor, about it as a potential sighting at Cal Expo or another place, uh, working with Bridget Dean on that as well. All of these things have potential, but we need to move forward with it, and citing has perennially been the problem. The fact of the matter is, when you propose a site, most communities rise up in revolt. Jay has experienced this. Rebecca Sandoval called earlier, uh, about the, the Women and Children's Shelter I proposed on Northgate. I understand the concerns. I understand the fears, but the fact of the matter is, we will not be able to solve these problems unless we find sites. And so I appreciate the discussion and the opportunity for a discussion, but to all the people who called in, I want to assure them that it hasn't stopped. The, the idea that we're looking for sites is definitely active, and, uh, I hope personally that we can do car camping safe ground within a month, uh, depending upon when we receive the equipment that I was able to purpose some of the CRF funds that the council allocated to buy this equipment with, uh, SHRA. So the other thing I want to say to my colleagues is that this is not just on our shoulders. We have very able staff to help us through this. I asked at the last council meeting, uh, I asked for SHRA and LaShelle and her team to come forward with potential sites for car campgrounds because we will have this equipment available, and I expect that to be forthcoming. Uh, so don't forget that we have SHRA, Danielle Foster and Bridget Dean, who I think is turning out to be a real star in the Office of Community Response that will help us very ably guide us through these issues. Another thing I want to talk about is the collaboration with the county. We've all known for a long time that that's essential. SAC Act got us to sign, you know, a big, a big board saying that we were all on board. They got county supervisors and, and, uh, the mayor and, and Jay, I think you signed this as well. I, I certainly did. That was a couple of years ago. Well, you know, we created the Sure Center, the Substance Use and Respite Engagement Center. Uh, Katie's been there to, to have a look at it, and this is really significant because it's the first time that I think we've really cracked the nut with the county. We started the, the center, which is basically a detox, a voluntary detox for people with any substance use issues, mostly homeless. It could be alcohol, but it's mostly methamphetamines and some opioids. And we built it with CRF funds, knowing that we were facing a financial cliff at the end of December, and lo and behold, miracles do happen. Uh, there is an interim executive at the county, Ann Edwards, who is fantastic and I think can really help us solve some of this collaboration issue. And with the blessing and help of Dr. Bilson on his way out the door, the county has committed over half a million dollars to keep the Sure Center open for the next three months. So we have been working hard and setting the stage for the collaboration, and, uh, I'm very pleased with the way certainly the Sure Center is going, and hats off to WellSpace, who has been a big player in the homeless space for a long time, and, uh, they are doing just a tremendous job with that. The, I think it was Bob Thomas called in and mentioned the idea of a JPA. That is something I think that is worthy of a discussion because, you know, if we create an organization where we have consistent meetings and talks with the county and other players, I think that that is something that, that warrants investigation. Um, you know, so there's two issues here. First, you know, citing homeless opportunities and then the idea of affordable housing. You know, they're very separate issues. They are, of course, uh, conjoined in, in, in a way. Look, you know, for all the time that I've spent on this homeless issue, I can tell you from the Railroad, uh, Trier Center that we started and working with all the advocates, the COC and Stex, SEF, Stex, Sacramento Steps Forward, and all of the people who work in the homeless space, we're dealing with a mental health and, and substance abuse crisis here. Fully two-thirds of the people who live outdoors are suffering from these two issues, and we have to address that head-on because people we found at Railroad cannot be all that successful in housing, even if we had a lot of housing stock. There's a tremendous number of people on the street whose issues are so deep and so severe that, uh, they won't be successful in housing unless we get very active in, in addressing those issues. And that's, that's why I wanted to work on the Sure Center because it's the first step in dealing with, I think, a very fundamental problem that we have to address in, in solving homelessness. The other piece of this puzzle is the housing bond. So, uh, it, it's no surprise to people here that I am hesitant to take on debt service at this juncture until our recovery from the pandemic is assured. It's a good idea. I think a housing bond can be helpful in the future, but we are going to have to be very careful about this. I know the mayor has said that it must pass a stress test, and of course, it must. This is a good thing, but there's a bigger conversation here about our fundamental services that we flag on providing for, for our constituents. Uh, you know, we're, we're looking at a storm drain increase and a solid waste increase and more financial burden on our constituents, and I will be very concerned about taking on more debt service, uh, but it's a discussion I'm certainly willing to have, but it's going to have to be a very thorough analysis. I did speak to, uh, you know, our finance team today and our city treasurer, and there is hesitation there, but it is a goal that is certainly worth talking about. At this point, there's so much uncertainty about where we are economically coming out of COVID, and we, we are frankly not coming out of COVID just yet, and it may be many, many months before we fully comprehend what a recovery is going to look like. So I'm hesitant about that, but open to the conversation. Mayor, I think it's, it's a good thing that you brought these two issues forward. I appreciate it very much, uh, because it's just so very difficult to get any particular site opened that we do need a master plan. At the same time, we may, we need, really need to move forward with urgency, and, um, I think that the safe ground approach is probably the, the best short-term way to do that, and, uh, I, I want to thank SHRA, uh, for working with me to, to get this equipment that should be forthcoming, hopefully in February, and we can start moving on hygiene and safety, and in so doing, have places to move people, uh, so that we can start cleaning up the filth in the city and help alleviate some of the impacts of homelessness on our housed residents. I do have one question for the city manager, and it was raised by our first caller, Kent Lachin, which is this, uh, you know, it is a fact that many homeless people are extremely resistant to services, and if you offer them housing and services, they reject them. At the same time, we have to have beds, uh, so that we can clean up some of these camps and move people who even are service-resistant out of areas where the impacts are severe, like Twenty-Ninth and C, a very difficult camp. Richard Wake has been complaining about, uh, Southland Park forever, and of course, the River District, which for decades has perennially been just beleaguered with the impacts of homelessness. So, Mr. Manager, my question is this, if we have shelter beds available and, uh, homeless individuals are offered a If we have shelter beds available and homeless individuals are offered a bed, but say they refuse, can we then move them anyway? So that was Kent Lichin's question, and I would like to know the answer and have it stated publicly.
I don't think that's, you know, I'm going to ask the city attorney to weigh in as well, but I don't believe that's going to be the case, given where we are with the public health order, along with the Boise decision that's still hanging out there. But, Ms. City Attorney?
Yes, Vice Mayor. There are certain measures that the city can take in the event that there are sufficient shelter space available, and we are trying to address a particular encampment, for example. And we are offering transportation and space available in these shelters, and the individuals decline. The city can likely still continue to proceed with addressing that encampment and trying to move it, if in fact there's shelter space available. And that's the best answer I can give you right now without a more specific fact, but there are steps, even under the Boise decision, that I wouldn't say would be individuals. It's more along the line of when we're trying to address a health and safety concern involving an encampment.
Well, thank you for that, Madam City Attorney. The grim reality is that we have to show compassion to unhoused individuals, but it is a fact that many people who are addicted to drugs and living outdoors are committing crimes against, you know, property crimes to support their habits. That's a big piece of the reality of homelessness. And one of the, one of the reasons that we're working so hard to create shelter beds is so that we can break that cycle. But it really does come down, to a large extent, to mental health issues and addiction issues. Some of those we can solve as a city, most we must collaborate with the county on, and we have set the stage. We've got great staff, we've got an initial collaboration with the county. I think we're poised finally to move forward more aggressively. But to the naysayers out there and the people who call us up and criticize us that we've done nothing, we have housed thousands of individuals since I've been a council member. We have solved problems for many, many unhoused individuals. And it's really a numbers game, but getting down to the fundamental causes of homelessness and the ramifications on the street. Okay, I've taken up enough time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, good comments. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate you. Let's go to Councilmember Jennings next, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you personally for bringing this master sighting plan to us. And I heard a lot of callers talking about, you know, we should have done it sooner. But we're doing it right now, and you've given us a timeframe to engage the community in order for the community to help us find the solutions within our district, and I'm excited about that. And so I'm already looking forward to engaging District Seven constituents and making sure you, as a constituent of District Seven, are invited to the meetings to join me in talking to our residents. So I just want to put that on the table first. I was also encouraged by the number of callers that called in, talking about this being the first thing on the agenda for 2021, and they were encouraged by that. The community wants this, and the homeless need this. And there were many other things that they said, but one of them talked about the short term goals for 2021 before the six months. And they talked about sanitation, immediate solutions, trash pickup, some of the things, warming centers I heard in there as well. And, and I just want to have a conversation, Mayor, about some of the encampments that are currently in place right now that don't have, they're unhealthy and they're unsafe. And I'm hopeful that we can, at the same time that we're moving forward with this plan, that we can address some of those issues of those encampments that are out there that are affecting all of our districts. I've had an opportunity to talk to our legal counsel, who tells me there's a pathway, but what might be holding it up is, we may not have the resources within our departments in order to be able to address some of the, the, the health issues and the safety issues. And if that's the case, we, we need to have garbage, rubbish, and debris pickups. We need to have warming centers. We need to have, deal with some of these public health issues. People who are living in encampments don't have the ability to, to keep it clean. They don't have the things that are necessary to maintain cleanliness. There's a lack of trash cans, there's a lack of cleaning supplies, there's a lack of trash pickups. And, and, and just to bring a pin to this, if our city departments don't have the ability to address some of the issues that these encampments have that are causing health issues for those who live in it and those who live around it, if they don't have the ability to do that, then I would propose at this point in time, during this six month period, while we're working on solutions, longer term solutions, that we work on trying to find ways to contract this out, so that we can do the cleanups and, and all the other things that are necessary to keep people safe in their encampments. And so I just want to kind of put that on the table, because I am concerned about what's going on right now in many of our districts, where we don't feel like we have the ability to do anything to make them safer and cleaner. And I'm convinced, based on talking to legal, we do have that ability. And with that said, now we just have to find out who is going to do that. One of our departments, and I can ask the city manager about that, or do we contract that out, so that those locations are in a safer, healthier condition?
Rick, Councilmember Jennings, I have a response to this in terms of, again, I keep talking about the calendar. When we, everyone's had a chance to speak, I want to get back to the calendar, because there are a couple of pieces missing, including, including our shorter term plan to deal with the immediate crises, and I want to talk about that, but I want to hear everyone first, okay?
Okay. So then the last thing I'll say, and I'll turn the mic over, is since we're talking about coming back in six months, I think we need to come back on a more frequent basis and have this conversation. And I've put down the end of February, the end of April, and then during the month of June, where we can have these conversations. And I think you're talking about that in your calendar, whether that be workshops or meetings, whatever it may be, but we need to have a more consistent basis of having a conversation about this.
Look at page 11 of your staff report here that lays out a tentative calendar, and I'm going to go through that again when I get back, when I get back to my turn.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. I see Councilmember Ashby, Bang, and Shneer.
Want me to go first, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to just start with this, because this comes up often, or at least it has in the time that Councilmember Shneer and I have been on this council, and I'd like to give city manager a chance to address it. The warming centers are really tied to the county. I'd love to give, Howard, are you still on here somewhere that you could address that?
Yeah, absolutely. So as we've shared with the council, that we open up the warming centers when the severe weather guidance that is a countywide adopted criteria for opening these warming centers, and it's based on the public health officer's recommendations on when these things open. One of the challenges that I've not publicly talked about is that, you know, when we have our employees, particularly in, under this public health order, the current public health order, in order for us to open up these centers and not put our employees in harm's way either with the stay at home order, there is a conversation that we need to have with our unions and meeting confer, if there's not a recommendation from the public health officer to open up these warming centers. So they're, they're tied together. We've been having really good conversations with the county, and that's why we were able to open this latest warming center at the Library Galleria. She supported the fact that we didn't have to have a three day period where we had, you know, sub freezing temperatures, and instead she said if we are forecast to have one day, she would support that, and that's how we were able to open it up so quickly. So it's a more broader conversation we're going to have, that we continue to have with the county. So there, there's some other complications there, too. So Library Galleria is a good example of how we're able to turn that facility into warming center safely. You know, the six foot clearance between beds or, or individuals, guests at these warming centers is a challenge, because if they're there overnight, we've, I think we've doubled them and we put up petitions. Obviously, we'd have to find sufficient locations where we can open up even more warming centers. But the, the other issue is that we had the capacity, with the help of the library, to house, you know, 60 guests that night. And overnight, I think the number was, we reported out to the council, 22 that took advantage. And we didn't have some of the limitations that were mentioned by the callers, in that animals were fine, you know, personal belongings, we were able to put up front in a secure areas overnight. So, yeah, I mean, and then there's the, the other issue of having sufficient resources to staff these security wise and whatnot. So there's, there's many facets to this, so it's, it's not necessarily as straightforward as you might think.
Okay, thanks, Howard. I just, you know, for as long as I've been here, the city has pushed back and pushed back, and, and we have gained ground over the years on the county, but I just want people to understand that that's sort of how, how that decision gets made. And then, Mayor, I have a few comments here, and I, I think, I can't quite tell if we have consolidated the two items here, this and the next, but it sort of seems that we have. So I'm going to get all of this out, and I, I think it'll probably cover me for the, for the next item, too, if that's, if that's your intent, I'm not sure. I just want to point out that, you know, I don't think it's a fair statement to say that this council has been operating outside of a plan. Not only is it not fair, it's also just not accurate or true. On October 22nd, we brought forward a five point plan presented by SHRA that had input from every single council office. We sorted through all of those items. The point of that plan was a diversified approach, so that we could target particular populations inside of the homeless population, knowing that there is no panacea, right? That just eight shelters that do the same thing isn't going to serve everybody in our city. Wanting to very clearly address particular populations, SHRA worked on that proposal for months, worked with individual council offices, worked with partner agencies. I myself hosted a roundtable for homeless service providers, primarily focused on women and children. Councilmember Shneer's office joined me in hosting that. It was actually held in his district for convenience purposes for providers. And out of that five point plan, we have housed 3,700 people in just about two years. And then the additional 1,300 people, based on COVID with Project Room Key, and then another 800 plus people with the rent program, Rental Assistance Program, also based on COVID dollars. So I don't want anyone sitting out there thinking that this council hasn't been swinging for the fences, and that this mayor hasn't drawn down millions and millions and millions of dollars, because he has, and we have, and we continue to fight. And yes, some of the issues are around citing, and some of the issues are around funding, and we can always use more of both. And I would suggest that that's what we focus on in the next 60 days. But I'd like to just take a moment to talk about some of these things. For one thing, scattered site models are a really important component that has not yet been implemented. There are components to scatter site models that have been put in place, the rental agreements with SHRA identified apartment complexes and landlords, but we need a funding source. We need a couple million dollars to put towards scatter site models, and then these can go in any district. So for any of my colleagues who would like to choose that as a potential solution, that is one that we can work on. The Safe Parking Program, which has been discussed here, I won't brief you on everything. Vice Mayor Harris did a great job of updating all of you on many of the components that we have already purchased for that, bathrooms, laboratories, things like that. Over $790,000 of funding has gone towards that project. We do still need a site for that one. Sleeping cabins, we implemented. We opened at Grove. There are 24 new cabins for young people. There will be 48 when the pandemic is over with, but that program is, is housing 48 guests. And we, that is a $5.6 million project that we pushed across the finish line in, in less than eight months. So, you know, I think that's one very good one. The Meadow View Navigation Center, which is open, is a $6 million project intended to house 100 homeless women. Of course, because of COVID, it's at COVID, it's at half of that capacity right now. They have had three outbreaks, by the way, in there, so we are doing COVID testing. And as you know, Councilmember Shneer has worked so hard on the X Street Navigation Center. He's fought back against the Trump administration with the mayor's help, and the two of them are now ready to move forward on the next $7.6 million shelter at that location. All of the pre-document plans and planning and process have been achieved, because those two never stopped working on it, even when the answer was no from the federal government. So that will house another 100 homeless adults with a little bit broader audience, and hopefully we'll be done with COVID and won't have to start with 50. But if we do, that'll be 50 more. And on the motel conversion site, I think sometimes publicly we've talked about our failures more than our successes on this one. Yes, we've tried for some hotel sites that haven't worked out, but we've also identified hotel sites that we've moved forward and moved hundreds of guests through, including Capital Park Hotel and the La Mancha Project. So all of those are moving forward. Yes, if we can find more hotel sites and more resources for hotel conversions, those are ideal. And the last of the five diversified suggested items that this council, or the last council, adopted for their strategy priorities was permanent supportive housing, which relies, takes us full circle back to the mayor's initial point here. It is a $10 million financing gap. With a $100 million housing trust fund, we would be able to move forward with the permanent supportive housing funding requirement for 100 or more permanent supportive housing units, which is item number five in our five point plan. I think this is important to note. Hopefully, people understand that millions of dollars have been spent, thousands of people have been housed, and this doesn't even include the million dollars we've given twice to City of Refuge in St. John's, where they have housed over 400 women and children, taken them from the streets. So all of that is to be said. Mayor, I have really, I think, six pieces I would like added to the equation today, and I don't think anyone will object to any of them. But one is, I want to call on our partner agencies, groups that we have worked with. Women's Empowerment, City of Refuge, both have capacity building projects that they are currently trying to raise money for, that if the city could find a way to help with capital funding, would increase our capacity for housing homeless people. So let's put that in the mix, because that might be something that some of the housing trust fund money could go towards, paying for the new facility, that the, both of those entities already own the land and already have the design drawings, they are just trying to raise the capital. So that is something I think we should call out to all of these groups. I'm sure there are others that have plans, too, that I don't know about, that we could help with capital costs. I know that just before you got here, Mayor, I championed getting a large sum of money to St. John's Women's Shelter, and you'll remember, right when you got here, you got to do the ribbon cutting with me, and I think Councilmember Garrett was there as well. And that allowed St. John's to serve 90 more women and children per year, which is really huge for an organization with a waiting list of over 300 people on a daily basis. But they only got that capital funding because the city came up with that. I would ask that, as we move forward through the next few weeks of discussing this, that we make sure that we consolidate into our plan, the five point plan already in place, because so much work has been done, that many of those suggestions and strategies could probably be implemented even before June, if we can identify citing or resources. And I want to make sure that LaShelle Dozier is the person who speaks to that, because she has been the lead for all of us on all of these items, and really has a tremendous record of success serving the city in these areas. A third, I would just remind us all that central to the success here, as Michael Alt stated and many others have stated, is services. We can't just build buildings or find houses or rent apartments. We need services, which leads us quickly to another conversation, which is we need the county. And we've got to figure out how we're going to engage them and how we're going to include them. And we've got to figure out how we're going to engage them and how we're going to include them and make them a partner. And then I think, you know, next for me would be uh addressing the warming centers, but we need a permanent answer here. We can't every year keep fighting the county over when they're gonna open and when they're not. So Howard, I would really look to you to help us have that conversation sort of once and for all and put an exclamation point on it because we do this every year with them where we're frustrated and our constituents are frustrated and we wanna do more and our hands are tied. We just need to get, get past that. On the housing trust fund, I fully support it. But we all know, and I just wanna reiterate, that it has to pass the stress test, which the mayor has stated clearly. It's laid out in every line in this. And that stress test, Mr. Kovil, needs to include assumptions that are financially reasonable for us, financially worst-case scenarios that are reasonable. So we can't just assume the best. We have to know that we're not gonna do this to our own detriment. So in looking at that stress test, we just, we as a council, every one of us, we need you to be comprehensive in what you bring back to us. So tho- those would be my uh contributions, Mayor. I look forward to it. I, I'm happy to host a Zoom or whatever's appropriate for my district to have a conversation about how we can be helpful and uh and what ways we can be supportive on a citywide basis. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think I accidentally missed Councilmember Getta um in the queue, so I'm gonna go back to Councilmember Getta. Can't hear you there. Councilmember. No? Uh, okay, one, two. There we go.
There you go.
There we go. Yeah, first I wanna uh love the Zoom world here, huh? Uh, first I wanna thank all of those who called in and have been working um uh and uh on the front lines here on this, on this topic, uh, many of them constituents of mine. Um, uh, and uh, and for their time on this because it, it has been and it needs to be a joint effort here. And I joined you, Mr. Mayor, uh, last year when you proposed this plan. So of course I support it uh full, full-heartedly. And uh, your comments about, your questions about the schedule and timing, I, I support the schedule in the way it is uh as well. Um, you know, but I do think that uh and agree with Councilmember Jennings on this is that we need to look at some more uh immediate things that we can do. I had a good conversation uh, a few weeks back with uh constituent of mine who's been Faith Kennedy, who's we all know has been a longtime advocate in, in our community and uh, and, and her point is correct that we can't just wait till six months from now. So for those, I know many have reached out to me who didn't call in tonight, I thank you for reaching out uh as well to do something. Um, I sup- you know, before the pandemic, Councilmember Jennings and I started working on the safe parking um uh plan. Um, and uh with, for both businesses and churches, and so I, I'm very supportive of that issue. I do wanna clarify though, on the scattered site, that's something that's already been happening and occurring. Sacramento Self-Help Housing, great organization, uh, has been doing that and finding homes and locations. And what they really need is resources and support in finding homes. So the scattered site model, I think, is a great one. Uh, wanna do a shout out for Patty Uplinger from the Talik Village Community who's been uh working on that for, for a long time. Um, and uh, and it's an immediate solution because we don't have to build anything. We look and, and, and work for locations where we can use that, so. Uh, I also agree with your components here about more immediate solutions that are like efficiency housing, modular housing, uh Pride Industries that has been working on wraparound services and looking at modular housing options, I think is a great one because um it's quick. It, and you don't have to, um, it doesn't take as long as a permanent supportive housing. So I think that is a component we, we should uh uh continue to look at because we need people to find uh places with services. Uh, the challenge that they have, which we all have had, is locations, finding sightings. So I think that's what's important here. And when we did the city audit to find where our public land was, we found that we had very, very little surplus land that uh, that during the last downturn, a lot of it was sold off. So I, I am encouraged about working with our property owners or business owners to look at where we can find land when we don't have public land. How can we find private land to be able to move this forward? Um, so services, yes, uh, looking at immediate faster solutions, I agree with those. Looking at those efficiency models, yes. Uh, and uh, on the housing bond, on the Catalyst, Catalyst Housing Trust Fund. Um, this is a, uh, you know, one that I, I also think that uh um we should do and move forward. Uh, I wanna thank our city treasurer. I was pleasantly surprised at the optimism that actually, that he had about moving forward on this. And it does mean we have to make some choices about that service and planning and that, and be thoughtful about how we do it. Um, so uh, I think the, the, the Catalyst Housing Trust Fund that uh our former council member um Hanson had put forward and it was part of an overall package that Councilmember Jennings and I had brought to the council as well. I think this is a, an, an important thing to move forward and I'd like to recommend that as we move forward in this, that we target it in investing in our commercial corridors, like North Gate, like Del Paso, like Fort Ridge, like Stockton Boulevard. Uh, that's where we see many of our unhoused who need support. It's also where we, where we see are many of our family-owned and minority businesses who are struggling. And that also meets our uh infill goals and the regional effort on Green Means Go as well. So there are a number of ways that we benefit from that. And most of those places have vacant land that are not producing anything. So when we're talking about, you know, making sure that we make prudent financial decisions, let's activate that land that's not being used and focus it on that early and make it a first priority. And um, I, I think Stockton Boulevard already has a few good projects. Uh, Mercy Housing has uh and Mutual Housing, both have two sites that can give us hundreds of units immediately for family-owned housing and extremely low income, which means housing our uh unhoused neighbors. And they have a gap finance right now, uh, gap financing challenge of about ten million dollars um uh for those projects because of the infrastructure challenge. So I think that, that, Mr. Mayor, the recommendation that I would say is uh, on the, on the Catalyst Housing Fund, let's focus on those commercial corridors. Uh, I'm willing to push and, and figure out how do we move faster on the construction of this affordable housing and permanent supportive housing um in those areas so that we can actually activate and, and make these corridors um more productive and provide housing. Lastly, I'll just say that um the challenge has become worse. We have made significant strides. We've made, uh, uh, we've learned a lot and we've made changes, but the challenge is worse and more people are suffering. Um, and it's affected our, not only the people who are unhoused and, and are hurting right now. It's affected our businesses. It's affected our families. And to find a solution, you know, what I find exciting about this is that we're gonna bring everyone together, our neighbors, our family-owned businesses, the service providers, the people that are working with those. So I welcome that opportunity to create a working group in my district to make sure that we do that with everybody in mind because it's gonna take a shared plan with advocates, businesses, neighbors, the homeless and those providers to find a real solution for the long term. So I'm here to support it. Uh, those are my recommendations that I think we should look at. Uh, mediate and also uh where we should prioritize our, our, our investments of the uh Catalyst, Catalyst or the housing bond.
Good job. Thank you so much, Councilmember Getta. Councilmember Vang and then Chenier, and then I'm gonna make uh come, come back and respond to some of the comments.
Thanks, Mayor. Sometimes I, I, I was just thinking to myself, I probably should be quicker on raising my hand um because a lot of my colleagues covered a lot of the topics, but or, or Councilmember Carl will always say to me, you know, my uh sometimes it's better just to talk less because uh folks on the dais talks a lot, but I think people have things to say. And so um, you know, I, I'm learning as I go. But first I, I just, I wanna say, uh, I wanna give a shout out just to all the community advocates and local nonprofits that called in today um to, 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 to share their support in this effort. Um, and I also wanna take this moment to thank my colleagues um for the work that they've already done. Councilwoman Chenier, um, I was gonna mention Councilwoman's five-point plan. I remember when I was um on the campaign trail, she had presented that and I thought it was an incredibly diverse uh, uh, approach to addressing um homelessness in the city of Sacramento. So I just do want to also just thank um folks that have been serving um on the dais. Just thank you for your, your hard work and your hard work. Um, and Mayor, thank you so much for um, you know, bringing the citywide proposal and resolution. Um, I, I do support an aggressive and comprehensive master plan uh to address homelessness in the city of Sacramento, and so I am in full support. Um, I think, you know, when we talk about this, it definitely will take courage, political will, collaboration and coordination among multiple stakeholders uh to align their resources and housing and supportive services. Um, and it is absolutely collective effort. Uh, we are still in the middle of a pandemic though, right? And um while COVID does impact everyone, we know that it is our unhoused neighbors and underserved communities that continues to just have more challenges and they're bearing the brunt. Um, and we know that if folks are living on the street, uh, they have a shorter lifespan and poorer health outcome. So we gotta do everything we can to, to make sure that we get folks housed, uh, not just housing, but getting them the services that they desperately need. I think tonight we also heard really loud and clear from community advocates that there is this sense of urgency, right? Um, even though I know that you're gonna go back and talk about your timeline, um, from now till June, I, I think there is this call to action that we have to do everything we can, whether that's safe ground, safe parking. Uh, we got, we gotta make sure that we um, we have a strategy around, around that. Um, I did also, you know, read the report. Uh, I wanna thank you, Mayor, and your staff for, for, for presenting and sharing. Um, I think it was noted in your report that we've spent a total of sixty million to address homelessness and prevention. Um, I'm curious to know, you know, what percentage of that funding has actually been used for prevention. I know that right now it's really about stabilizing and getting folks, folks housed. But for me in particulars, you know, I'm really thinking about our families that can't make rent. Um, I, I don't want us to lose sight of the preventative piece, right? Um, that we gotta also make sure that we're just um as aggressive and comprehensive on the upstream strategies to protect individuals and families um that could get displaced. Um, and so some recommendations, you know, that I have, one, I think just hearing the public comments is that you know, any resolution or policy concerning unhoused neighbors, uh, one definitely has to be transparent. So I appreciate, you know, you reaffirming that, but most importantly, that it needs to really involve uh direct involvement from members um who are unhoused themselves, right? You know, Mike from Sacramento Act shared in his letter that I read from Sacramento Act, Christie from S E I U, Evan and so many others mentioned in their public comments and the letters they submitted to council um that they wanna be part of that process. I know all of us individually will be doing our own kind of community uh town halls, meetings to lead these discussions. Um, but they are also our eyes and ears on the ground and doing mutual aid and on the front line. Um, so it's gonna be really important that these, these, these folks, these community advocates, um, they work directly with, with our unhoused folks and we gotta make sure that they're part of that process. Um, I think some of our unhoused neighbors, right, I, I always hear that they're service resistant and there is a reality to that. Uh, but you know, Councilmember Valen- Valenzuela and I spoke about this during the campaign and you know, even in our conversation, that oftentimes much of that is contributed to the fact that uh, many of them maybe say, they say no to the services because they feel like it hasn't really helped them in the past. And so how do we always, how do we get them to be part of that process that's gonna be really critical? Um, I also wanted to add, you know, remember um Councilwoman Katie Valenzuela mentioned about um looking at other alternatives when we think about expanding affordable housing. I think it's great regarding the trust fund and the bond, and I know we're gonna do a, a, a stress test. Um, but I liked it for staff to also bring back other potential funding mechanism, right, Mayor? I know you're really good at looking for money, leveraging state partnerships, right? You brought millions of dollars into the city of Sacramento. Um, but I think also on a city, um, on the city side, you know, I'd be interested in exploring other ways and bringing revenues, right? Um, you know, inclusionary fees, right? I think that these are things that we should put on the table as well. Um, and again, I think the last piece for me is that, you know, just as we move forward on this comprehensive plan, I just want us to um, don't lose sight that, you know, our strategy has to be as aggressive and making sure we got guardrails up to protect our families and individuals that are on the verge of homelessness, right? Because we could do the treatment piece, we can try to house folks, uh, provide services, but if we don't, if we lose sight of that piece, um, we're gonna be back here again. And so um, that's something that I, I don't want this council to, to lose sight of. So, you know, I support this uh moving forward and I look forward to working with you and um, my colleagues to, to make sure that we really do have a, a comprehensive plan, not just from us, but from the community, from our unhoused neighbors and from community advocates. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Um couple of thank yous first, if I can start. One, uh, I wanna thank you for pushing on this and thank uh Ms. Burrows for her work on it. And Mr. Bytel, if he's listening in as a farewell, um, thank him as well. I know he put a lot of effort into this as well. Um, also wanna thank my colleagues, uh, Pro Tem Ashby and Vice Mayor Harris for noting some of the work that, that has been done. Um, the number of failures that I've had trying to get a site before we finally landed on W X. Um, but I think that what we're looking at, um, particularly with the small, potential for smaller sites will be a lot easier than what we're looking at for the number of acres to put the hundred-person shelters on. So really thinking about kind of a portfolio of ideas, as we've been doing, uh, is, is going to make it, I think, somewhat easier to find the sites that we need. And I'm looking forward to working with the members of, of District Five, our community members who do care a lot about this issue uh, to find a number of sites and we'll be announcing some public uh town halls and, and trying to engage our community in this pretty quickly. Um, I, I wanna thank all my colleagues. I, I, you said most of what I was gonna say, but I, I just wanna talk about a couple of process things pretty quickly and then, and then touch on the bond. Um, you know, I, I think one of the problems always with the homeless is people think of the homeless as kind of this, the homeless versus the individuals that are experiencing homelessness, which is very different. And we know that those individuals uh come, get to their place in many different ways and that their needs are very different. And so we need to really recognize that um, as we think about what we're doing and try to layer in the needs of the homeless community with what we can do, where we can put people and the types of services that we can provide. Uh, I also think it's great that we're doing this citywide. Um, some, such as the River District, have taken the brunt of this for a long time. And we really need to, to push this out into all of our communities and work with those communities. And if we do it in the right way, hopefully those communities will take ownership uh of what they're doing. Um, I, I do wanna say that there are, you know, as I said, there are people who are experiencing homelessness from different angles. We need to also think about how we share some of those with the most difficult challenges uh, and some of those with, with le- lesser challenges around the city as we cite these things. We don't want everything that's the most difficult in the place that's in the River District, to use that as an example. Also wanna uh bring up, you know, what I always bring up, which is our youth. Um, we have, you know, close to four hundred Tay youth who are homeless right now. Uh, these are, these are young people that, uh, many of whom are LGBT who are forgotten in a lot of ways. And so, oh, we need to be, I think, thoughtful and intentional about how we do the citing, what kind of facilities we have and what can be for young people, what can be for women only, uh, what can be for single men. So, you know, it, it's not as easy as each of us going to find a site and doing what is most easy at that site. I think we need to think about the population that we're trying to serve and how we can meet uh those extensive needs across the board. So I just wanna put that in and, and uh, Julia, if you're working on this or, or um Bridget, uh, those are things that I hope we use as a lens. The other lens we need to use and, and Councilmember Vang brought this up uh slightly differently, but I think getting to the same point is the equity lens that we've been talking about in everything we do. And there are certainly inequities about how we've done a lot of this. And so using that lens, again, for youth, for um diversity's sake in how we do this is gonna be really important. So that, that's my piece on the process. Um, I think this is the right thing to do as, as a pro tem said. We've done a lot of work on this uh for a number of years. Actually, Mayor, I would, I would argue going back a couple of years before that, when Mr. Hanson and I started really working on this and trying to push money into homeless issues when the city had really never, ever done that before. Um, and, and got Emily's position established within the city manager's office because she was uh really able and, and did a fabulous job in getting us going in all this. And I think that uh recognizing that along the way is gonna be important as well. Um, on the bond, uh, you know, given the stress test and hopefully passing the stress test, uh, I'm very, very much in favor of that. Uh, you know, leadership requires a little bit of risk sometimes and, and strategic risk-taking is part of what we should be doing to solve a problem and a challenge as large as this. Um, so I am all for doing that. Um, I'm very excited that we went from a hundred to a hundred and forty million. Uh, thank you, Mr. Kovil. I'll take the extra. I'll take the extra 40 and and stick it on Stockton Boulevard. So we can use that as a corridor, as an example, with all the other initiatives that we've going, we have going and the and the potential and threats involved with Aggie Square. We need housing, we have 100 vacant lots there. It's the right place to do it and experiment with a lot of things we're doing. Eric talked a little bit about Mercy and the $10 million gap. But I am hoping as we move forward on the bond, we can really think about some carve-outs for different places around the city that we know and intentionally can think about what they need. I also think that that Angelique's thoughts about City of Refuge and Women's Empowerment, basically shovel-ready projects that will expand our capacity. That's the first place I would look and see what we can do there. So with that, I think we're on the right track. Again, I I just want to emphasize, you know, we have all been working on this for a long time. This is probably the most frustrating issue I've had in 18 years now of public service, where, you know, we get so many emails and texts and calls every day. As as Ms. Valenzuela has said, it's just frustrating when you can't do a lot about it. And and even though we have put a lot of effort into it, even though we've housed 5,000 people, we've had another 5,000 kind of slip in right behind them or some number. I I know we're not doing a point-in-time count this year because of COVID, but we can make some assumptions about the numbers. So with that, thank you. I'm looking forward to getting to work on this. And District Five, we will be getting back to you very shortly about getting you together and and looking for sites. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shear, Councilmember Laloie, and then I will respond. Go ahead. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I I want to thank you and your leadership for coming up with this master plan. I think this is the one thing that we definitely need. I think, you know, I also have to really say thank you to the the current council members and the previous ones, because this is a topic that it's been dealt with, but it's such a multi-layered topic that there's never an ending to it. There are certain layers that I think we need to definitely consider, and that is mental illness and substance abuse. This plays a very important role. And also, being the city, it seems like, and having the the county jailed in downtown, are we having a revolving door where as we find, as we're going to find shelters for our homeless community, other cities within the county, they're kind of drop off their issues within our city so we can take care of. So that's another thing that, you know, we need to take into consideration. But I'm very excited about this plan. I think it's wonderful. But I I like to throw in a look, a little bit of a curveball regarding the the Housing Trust Fund Bond. I think it's a great idea, but everyone in this city, Mr. Mayor, tells me if there is money to be found or negotiated, you're the man that we got to talk to. Is there a way that we could bring the county and ask them to pull a $100 million bond? And we can possibly match that to really make a a a grand step on taking care of this? Because when I'm looking at the previous grants, 64 million, 21 million CARES Act, that's roughly close to that 100 million. And when you look at it today, even though it's been very effective, but it's, it doesn't show itself. And I think some of the districts have been hit with this issue much harder than some, some, you know, some of the districts within the rest of the city. So I would love to get your thoughts on that to see if we can get the county involved. Because without them, I think we're kind of fighting an uphill battle. And I think they they need to be recognized on how they've been helpful. And also regarding the current immediate thing that we need to do, anytime I hear that we live in the most powerful country in the world, the richest country in the world, and two people we lost simply because of cold weather, it bothers me. It bothers me as a human being, now it bothers me as an elected official. I think I would like to challenge my colleagues that within the next week, we should come up with some solution to to minimize this problem. And if the county believed that at 30 degrees is the threshold, I think maybe we need to sit down and see if we can bring that threshold a little bit higher. Because I know after this meeting, when I'm running to my car, I'm literally running, I make sure the heater is on before I get into my car, and I think it's around like 55 degrees. So I'm hoping that my colleagues, we can work together and find a quick solution as early as next week on how we can create some kind of a more global area where we can have people staying safely. We have some big, large buildings within our, the eight districts, that some of them are completely vacant. Can they be used as an emergency tool for nights only? That's, you know, a question that, again, I I bring to you, Mr. Mayor. But you have districts who are supporting your plan. And I assure you that I would work diligently with my constituents to create sites so we can move forward. But I do believe we need more than $100 million to to fight this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sean. Let me, I I'm going to address the issue with the county in a minute. And first of all, I just want to say how appreciative I am of the public testimony. But the way that in the very first meeting of the year, every single colleague, with that exception, is leaning in here and and has said yes. And I know you have no illusion that this is going to be hard. And it is going to require not just political courage, but it's going to require an intense amount of detailed time individually and together. Because again, this is human nature. It isn't about any of you or me or any of us, just human nature. If we were to go back now and say, ask our great staff to come back and say, work with all the members and come back in six months to come up with the plan, I would guarantee you that for a variety of reasons, they would need another three-month extension or maybe a six-month extension. Because unless we confront the difficult questions publicly together, where we're actually putting sites on the table and the community knows with your leadership that this is what you are suggesting and it's digested in the public setting, there will be a digression. And we can't afford the digression. And so the calendar itself is detailed. And I think from what I heard from my colleagues today that we need to add a couple of things as well. But let me just go through what is, what what is tentative here, the way we have laid this out. The idea would be to come back February 9th and 16th, two consecutive Tuesdays. The ninth, to actually take on the question of the campus-based approach, the Haven for Hope model, some call it. The campus-based approach is one of the first things that we talk about, that we understand, where we're actually looking also at potential sites with the help of our staff and the community. The second meeting in February, the 16th of February, is crucial because it's we're going to, it's where we as a council, with, again, with the help of our team and the community, are going to lay out the overarching, overarching numerical goals. How many beds, safe camp spaces, safe parking lot spaces are we intending to create here? I hope the number is large. It is large enough to meet at least the city's proportion of the county-wide problem. But we have to, we we have to articulate that and pass that as part of an early resolution and add our guiding principles around good neighbor policies, around what kinds of uses we want in different parts of the city. And again, over these next, for the next month, we will work with the city management and you to define the questions so we can give the answers on the 16th. Throughout January, of course, and February, we're asking each of you to, as you do in your own way, by the way, to go out and engage your communities to actually begin this preparation for these two meetings in February around citing, around operation, around identifying programmatic partners. And then in March, it gets even more interesting because what I think we need to do is go around the horn in any order, but district by district, with you presenting, each of you presenting about what sites, how many people you believe you can serve, and what kind of housing and/or program that you recommend can be delivered. We then, once we identify those sites, we then move into the detailed discussion about funding and financing and prioritization, because we may not have enough money, even anticipated money, to do everything on the eight council district list. But we've got to then set those priorities. And we we, that 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 will take, all that will take some time, all leading up to June. So you can see sort of the intensity of the process. But here's what I know was missing, and it came out tonight, and I knew this was going to be back tonight. I said it generally in my opening statements, but you guys really all put a finer point on it. And that is, we're not waiting till June here to to do our work. We can't. I mean, the problem is too urgent right now. So I want to make a couple of suggestions. And we'll work with Howard and our teams to actually fill in the calendar here, maybe for January. Number one, I do think we need a status report on the so-called five-point plan, which morphed into the $62 million plan when it included CARES. And let's look at what the implementation timeline is for all the things that are already in the queue. That's that's number one. Number two, I hear the desire from the members, especially we're in the midst of winter here, to have a broader discussion about our warming center policy. And I think that's appropriate to bring back in January after Howard and I, and we all have some greater chance to talk to the county a little bit more about how we might work with them together. But then third, and this is the, my epiphany for the night in terms of what we could get done in our, in in real short order. So in November, before the new members were here, the city staff did a great job identifying 1,700 parcels, 1,700 parcels that could be immediately available and allowable for safe camping, okay? Now, I didn't bring it forward right away because some council members had concern about some of the parcels. And we began thinking about this broader and larger policy. Here's what I want to suggest tonight as a short-term, as a short-term action. It's 1,700 plus parcels. So if Councilmember A, B, C, or one through eight, excuse me, if each of you wanted to say, you know, there are 25 parcels in my district that don't belong, then take them off. Take them off. Do it informally with me or with Howard. With Howard, probably, that's more appropriate, given the Brown Act and all that jazz. And then we can take those parcels off and call it an interim ordinance and bring it back by the end of January and pass the darn thing and begin allowing the safe ground. Begin allowing it with 1,700 parcels minus, minus whatever you choose as council members to take off the list. In other words, maybe we don't have to overcomplicate it. All right? And it may not have the service plan attached to all the parcels, I get all that. But at least it gets us started and then we can fold it in, we can fold it into the master plan. But you get the early discretion members over the parcels that you don't want to be included. So that's my suggestion. I want to, I got a couple of other things to say, however. I want to talk about the county for a moment, because you all hit on it. And the glass is half-full here. Yes, there have been some historic tensions, it's no secret. But I will tell you, in calendar year 2020, they led on room key and did a great job, and we partnered with them. I think in a very effective way, and I think we can enhance that. Bob Thomas called. Bob Thomas, for those of you who don't know him, is a former city manager, a former county executive, and a can-do, a can-do person in this community. I will tell you that I will bring this question of a JPA with a yes recommendation to the city council at any time. My answer to that is yes, I think it's absolutely the right idea. And I will reach my hand out beginning tomorrow with the county, with Board Chair Frost and Howard, maybe with Ann Edwards, and talk to the other members. And we will begin working this. I think our answer, our answer to that question is we would be willing partners in a joint powers authority, because the informality of two-by-twos and informal working groups and all that well-intended stuff doesn't get it done. That's not what we did, as Bob Thomas alluded to, when we had a flood, when we had massive flooding in the 1980s. It's not what we did. We didn't say, let's talk about it. We put together a joint powers authority. And guess what? Flood control is different now in Sacramento because, and better because of that collaboration. So let's get going on that. Finally, I want to engage with the city attorney, not here tonight, but over time here. I'm defining the actionable scope of what a state of emergency really means. Because if state of emergency, the way we have used it, at least during my tenure on the city council, is around the shelter declaration, because it has been a prerequisite for obtaining state funding. Well, that's fine. But I want to know what we could do under a broader state of emergency and our inherent police powers. Because if this is not an emergency, I don't know what is. People dying on our streets, people lingering on our streets, the impacts on everybody. This is a state of emergency. And so as we go forward with this plan, both short-term and the master plan, I don't want to be hindered by things that we might be able to get around appropriately by fully exercising our emergency powers. And finally, this is a little bit of a culture shift, although, as Jay said, it's been coming for a long time in terms of defining, alleviating this, not alone, because we need the county, but as a, as a clear city priority. We have a great city staff, a great city staff, a great city manager. And here's what I have in my mind as I was listening to all this. It may seem out of, off-topic, but it isn't. I have in my head what I have seen several times over the last four years when we've had a public safety emergency, the way the command center works in the city of Sacramento, and how you've got mostly law enforcement, but you have this collaborative team that comes together in one place and is on it with fierceness because public safety is essential, and it is essential. And when you're dealing with a public safety crisis, you got to be there till 10 or 11 at night. And we got to be working to alleviate whatever is going on. We need that same command center approach when it comes to this issue and with the county. Because we can't have this anymore. And we can't say it isn't our job. We can't have it. It's a hard problem. There's no question about it. And nobody says we're going to cure it. Man, we got to make it much better. We cannot have people lingering in these encampments and on the streets. And boy, the Office of Community Response is an ambitious effort. It's a great effort. But it's just the beginning. And so those are my suggestions here. But specifically, I'd like to bring back the safe camping ordinance with 1,700 parcels minus whatever you say, members, you don't think sounds right. And call it an interim ordinance, and let's get it in place so that we're, we're at least moving. That plus the implementation of the plans we already have in place with timelines, plus a discussion and with the intent of trying to expand as much, as much shelter for people, especially at night during the cold, as possible. Howard?
Yeah, absolutely. So that, we can make that happen. I need to have
Yeah, absolutely. So that we can make that happen. I need to have. I guess on the interim ordinance, we're going to send out the parcel map that we discussed prior to the holidays.
Yeah, just send it out to the members and then hear from the members and again seventeen hundred parcels. If the interim ordinance allowed thirteen hundred parcels. Then we'd have thirteen hundred parcels that we could get going on now as opposed to. As opposed to fiddling with whether all seventeen hundred are appropriate or not.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Howard. I put my hand up, but I don't know if you can see that because I'm having trouble finding the ordinance language. Was seventeen hundred for the three hundred foot setback or the five hundred foot setback?
I believe it was the five hundred.
Okay, because part of the problem with District Four is that when you went from three hundred to five hundred, it actually like eliminated most of the sites in the district and like. I think if I'm going to look at sites in District Four with my community stakeholders, it would probably need to be the three hundred foot. Yeah, and I really like to actually urge us and Howard, I wonder if this is possible. Can we take this up next week? Like? Is that possible? I know staff already drafted the report and it's ready to rumble. Is that possible for next week?
Well, Katie, if I may, why don't we? Let's compromise from the day it's here. Why don't we say two weeks? Because let's let's just give the members. A week to look at the map. Because the county agenda has to be posted by Thursday, right? And so today's Tuesdays.
But make. Yeah, I wonder if, I mean, I don't know if the other folks on the call want to chime in if you need. I mean, I know this was published a few months ago and I think the only reason I'm pushing. And I'm happy to have pushback happen is like we really need to find safe camping spots in District Four soon. I can't have another person die if we can prevent that at all.
This is why I'm suggesting we bring it back, but I you know, I care. It's next Tuesday or the Tuesday after. I just want to give members time to take off, you know?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Valenzuela, maybe I'll send out. I'll send out both lists, the three hundred foot. And the five hundred and then see what we get back. If the timing can work where we can get back next week.
Fine.
Yeah, because that's that's where the mayor is right. The deadline is five o'clock Wednesday. We push it sometimes to Thursday.
With this Tuesday, great, but we've got to give the members a chance to take off the parcels, do the three and five hundred and we'll vote on this no later than a week from Tuesday and maybe Tuesday itself.
And then also on the five-point plan update, I'll work with S H R A because Councilmember Mayor Protem Ashby was correct. That Michelle and S H R A had been working on implementation and we could do an update and. And so I won't speak for her in terms of the timeframe, but I understand that the desire is to come. Back in January at some point and there's Michelle. She's on the call.
Okay, is that okay? Can we take a motion on on the resolution with the additions that? I have added here because I think it does. Mostly what we've talked about.
Sorry, I want to just add one more thing and I'm sorry if I'm breaking the protocol. I know that I don't know how things work in this phase of the agenda yet. The other provision around looking at other means of bringing in affordable housing, like through developer requirements or other stuff, I want to make sure that's expressly included as well.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not sure from the other members too. I mean, I guess I'm just looking for a pulse check if two weeks is needed on the short-term ordinance and I know I'm pushing this really hard, but. I mean, sixty-five years old and I'm going to age myself a little bit here. Sixty-five years old is the same age my mother is and and I've been really haunted by the fact that someone my mom's age died a few blocks away from where I live. And if we could, if folks are comfortable trying this next week, I'd love to make that commitment tonight. But if not, I mean, if folks need two weeks, okay, but. That's something I just like to hear from the other folks.
Let's just do a show of hands because I don't want to go around the bend and.
Mayor, if I could, I think this is easy to answer. Last time we saw that map, city staff still needed to review it for active development. I sincerely doubt they're going to be able to do that by Thursday. And I hear what Katie's saying, but I think you might be better, Katie, to press on warming centers being open than that map in terms of getting to a faster solution for the sixty. Five-year-old on your street. So I wouldn't press city staff there. You don't want to put out a map to the public that includes. Sites where there's actually already active construction, which is what was put out last time.
Yeah, so let's, I mean, Katie. Good for you, man. I want I want to send it for tomorrow. How's that? Okay? But let's, we're going to do it a week from Tuesday, which, believe me, is fast in city world, in any government world. And the staff's already prepared. But you're right, there's a little more work to do. A week from Tuesday. We go.
Mayor, I want to see if I can get a little clarification on that last piece. I'm looking for other means. What is?
It's just what I'm going to interpret it that we are going to, when we bring back specifics about the housing bond, we're also going to bring back. Other ideas. And by the way, Councilmember Valenzuela or any member, you're welcome to tee up yourself, right? In terms of. Any idea, you can raise it during council ideas and questions or send around a memo or whatever, whatever you want and then I'll work with you. To ensure that, you know, she managed our work, you to ensure that it gets heard, right?
Yeah, I mean, I could answer Councilmember Chenier's question briefly. I think since this is a scoping document, I just want to make sure that we're including the full scope and part of the scope could be. Policies that we could adopt that could help promote acquisition of more affordable housing. So one example I gave was the. Community Opportunity to Purchase Act. It's a policy that's been done in several cities. When a parcel is listed, it gives community groups forty-five days to meet the price and then they. Doesn't go to open bidding. They just get the property at the price that was set. So there's certain policies I think we could bring in that could be creative. I just want to make sure they're on the table.
No, I understand that. I just want to make sure that we do kind of commensurate outreach. To the development community because this is going to impact them. We're in a recession and I want to make sure. There was a re, I mean, I was supportive when I started here of inclusionary housing. There was a reason we went away from it because of the economy as a whole. So I just want to have others at the table when we have that discussion. Because I think it's important and there's financial considerations for our communities.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a legitimate issue to debate. That's fine.
No, I think we should debate it. I don't have any problem with that, but I want to make sure that there are others at the table.
Absolutely. We're not, yeah, just I take it for the purposes of the motion. We're going to bring back in addition to the bond, other ideas that members have on how to increase housing production.
And are we including the advisory committee on the homeless work?
The advisory committee.
What acts recommendation, which I mentioned as well. I think it's it's a good piece for gaining the equity that we need.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is.
A quick summary of what all you just quick fire added to your motion.
Okay, let me let me summarize. We're going to add. An action item or a report back in two weeks. A report back on the status, including implementation and timelines. For the five-point slash sixty-two million dollar plan. Number two. We are going to bring back a week from Tuesday. The safe camping ordinance for action. With the ability of council members individually to. Take the three hundred foot or the five hundred foot map and to. And to eliminate any parcels that you don't, you do not deem appropriate. And unless the exception wipes out the rule, which I don't think it will, but. If, you know, but seventeen hundred plus parcels. This is.
And that's just for the zoning change because the city doesn't actually control the land. So you'd really just be.
Okay, it is for what the staff recommended. The advisory committee, as Councilmember Chenier. Mentioned a moment ago and that's it. And then I stated my intent vis-à-vis the JPA, but that doesn't need to be in the motion. That's just a statement of intent. And then Councilmember Valenzuela requests that when the. Housing bond comes back, that there also be a fuller discussion of other potential finance. Options that increase affordable housing production.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's great. I'm sorry, Katie. Mayor, just one last question. Jay, on your advisory committee, this is advisory of people who have. But previously or currently experiencing homelessness, so they're chiming in and have a voice across. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'm good.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to second your motion.
Okay.
Does this include the bond at this point or no?
Yes, it includes the bond. Yes, it does. But remember, we're just beginning the process, the stress test. It's our intent to do the bond if we can pass the stress test. Okay, who moved? Did I move my own motion or did somebody else?
You moved it, Mayor.
I did. Okay, well then. I'm the maker. Okay, I get it. My councilmember Valenzuela, let's call the roll.
Can I make one quick comment?
Yes, sir.
You said it's our intent to do the bond if it can pass the stress test. I actually feel it requires a bit more debate. But I'm willing to move along with it.
I understand. Of course, there will be a vote. There would have to be a vote for final approval, but this is, yes, the. Setting the direction. I understand. Okay, let's call the roll.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gera?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that's the first unanimous vote of the new council. I mean, other than the calendar. So congratulations. Good job. Good job, everybody. Let's move now to the other discussion, item fifteen, and for this one, I am going to. Turn it over to Howard Chan and I guess Tom Pace and Tina Lee. Vote are here to present.
Tina's going to present the item here.
Go ahead.
So good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Tina LeVoe, Program Manager with the Community Development Department. Code Compliance Division, and tonight we're presenting an update on the tenant protection program and tenant protections related to COVID nineteen. In response to a request from Councilmember Valenzuela. My presentation will include a summary of the tenant protection program, a review of the program timeline and an update on tenant protections related to COVID nineteen. The tenant protection program, or TPP, was created to assist tenants impacted by increasing rental rates. By establishing limits on annual rent increases and providing protections for unjustified evictions. It applies to most apartments and duplexes built before February first nineteen ninety-five, including mobile home rentals. Single occupancy rooms and hotels rented for longer than thirty days. Single-family dwellings and rental units and condominiums and stock cooperatives are not, are excluded. The program requires a rental housing registry and landlords must pay an annual tenant protection program fee of twenty dollars per unit. There are two key elements of the tenant protection program. The first is related to rental rate restrictions. TPP limits annual rental rate increases to no more than five percent plus the change in the Consumer Price Index. The maximum rent increase cannot exceed ten percent. The current maximum rent increase is six percent. The rental rate cannot be increased more than once every twelve months and a tenant cannot waive this maximum rate limit. This restriction applies to all tenants regardless of how long they've resided in the unit. Tenants can submit a complaint to the city if they believe a landlord has failed to comply with this restriction. A landlord can submit a petition to request a fair rate of return hearing for approval to increase above the rent maximum. However. The landlord must provide detailed documentation to support the request and the hearing examiner's decision is final. The second key element of the program concerns eviction protections. A landlord can't terminate the rental agreement and require the tenant to move out without a just cause reason. Once a tenant has resided in the unit for more than twelve months. Just cause reasons include failure to pay rent, breach of the rental housing agreement, criminal or nuisance activity. Failure to give access, necessary and substantial repairs requiring temporary vacancy. Owner move-in or withdrawal of the unit from the rental market. Tenants can submit a petition requesting a pre eviction hearing if they believe a landlord terminated rental agreement without just cause. So now that I've provided a little summary of the program, I'd like to review our timeline since its adoption in August of twenty nineteen. The complete timeline is in the staff reports. I'm not going to go over all of the dates, just hit some of the critical ones. So in September of twenty nineteen, the program became effective and city council adopted the program budget, which included three full-time staff people. A program specialist and two customer service specialists. As we worked to bring program staff on board, existing code staff worked to support the program and respond to tenant inquiries. In January of twenty twenty, city council approved an agreement with Sacramento Self-Help Housing to provide intake and outreach assistance for TPP. By early March of twenty twenty, the program was fully staffed and we were able to get everybody hired and on board. Then came COVID. On March seventeenth, twenty twenty, city council adopted an emergency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium. On evicting residential tenants unable to pay rent due to loss of income caused by COVID. TPP staff priority shifted from program implementation to supporting the eviction moratorium and assisting tenants impacted by COVID. A couple of days later, the city manager directed all non-essential city staff to work from home in accordance with the county health order related to COVID. So TPP staff began working remotely from home. On March twenty-fourth, the city council expanded the moratorium to include commercial tenants who were unable to pay rent. Then on March thirtieth of twenty twenty, the council again amended that ordinance. To limit the protection for commercial tenants to first-floor retail only. This resulted in the moratorium expiring for all other commercial tenants. On August thirty-first, twenty twenty, the state enacted AB thirty-eighty-eight. An urgency statute that applies to all residential tenants expiring, experiencing a financial impact due to COVID nineteen. So subsequently, on September thirtieth, twenty twenty, the city's moratorium allowing non-payment of rent for residential tenants expired. As tenants were now covered by AB thirty-eighty-eight. Although tenants are protected by state statute, our staff continues to serve as a resource for those who have questions about tenant protections related to COVID. So from September of twenty twenty to date, our staff has really resumed focusing on program development for TPP. This includes, it's not limited to coordinating with our consultant and stakeholders on outreach and communication strategy, database development. Finalizing our administrative policies and procedures, developing our rental housing registry forms and process. And implementing program billing and invoicing. This month, we are launching our community outreach campaign. We'll be contacting landlords to remind them of the program registration requirements and advising them on upcoming billing notices. We will also be reaching out to tenants through a variety of partners and forums to advise them of their rights and how to initiate a complaint or concern. In addition to working with our partner Sacramento Self-Help Housing, we have already reached out to several stakeholders and requested their assistance with our communication efforts. Later this month through March, we'll begin the TPP rental registration process, which includes mailings for over eight thousand one hundred parcels. That include more than forty-two thousand rental units. And then in April, we'll begin mailing tenant protection program fee invoices for those units. So finally, I just want to give a little bit of an update on the status of tenant protections related to COVID nineteen. So again, the city's moratorium allowing non-payment of rent for residential tenants impacted by COVID expired on September thirtieth. Following the enactment of AB thirty-eighty-eight, which provides eviction protection to all residential tenants experiencing a financial impact due to COVID. Tenants must pay a minimum of twenty-five percent of the rent due each month from September twentieth through January. I'm sorry, September twenty twenty through January twenty twenty-one, or if tenants are unable to pay that amount each month. Tenants can pay the total twenty-five percent owed by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one to avoid eviction. For Sacramento residential tenants who utilize the city's moratorium and AB thirty-eighty-eight protections. The deadline to pay unpaid rent for the period of March twenty twenty through January twenty twenty-one is also January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. On December seventh, twenty twenty, Assemblymember David Chu introduced Assembly Bill fifteen, which would extend AB thirty-eighty-eight protections. This bill can't be heard until this Thursday, so it's not scheduled for committee at this time. In regard to commercial tenant protections in September, the governor's order extended the commercial eviction moratorium for first-floor tenants to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So they have until that date to pay unpaid rents. The deadline for commercial tenants other than first-floor tenants to pay unpaid rents was October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. So that concludes my presentation. In closing, I'd really like to recognize the tenant protection program staff for their hard work. Vicki Riggins-Madina is our program specialist. Lisa Santana and Jaclyn Martinez are our customer service specialists who've responded to over three thousand five hundred inquiries from March to December. And I'd also like to thank our advisory attorney Cheryl Patterson for her outstanding legal guidance. So Tom Pace, Peter Lemus and I are available to answer council questions or concerns.
Councilmember Valenzuela, you I know asked. Councilmember Valenzuela, you, I know, asked to bring this forward.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, apologize. Is there public testimony? Do we have public testimony?
Yes, I have 15 callers on this item.
Okay, let's hear from the callers, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, ma'am, my first caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, this is Mallory Farrell, Senior Vice President with California Apartment Association. Our association represents over 50,000 single-family and multifamily rental owners and property managers who are responsible for over
Yes, I have 15 callers on this item.
For over 2 million affordable and market-rate rental units throughout California. First off, I'd like to applaud Tina and Vicki and the rest of city staff for working diligently to get the Tenant Protection Program up and running despite the hurdles posed by COVID-19. Since the ordinance's adoption, we have collaborated with staff to develop robust compliance materials, communicate policy updates, and host an in-person educational event for the rental housing industry. We look forward to continuing to partner with the city on enhanced education and outreach on this program, and are in the process of planning a second virtual compliance event for the month of February to ensure the rental housing industry understands the current tenant protections in place in the city of Sacramento. The Tenant Protection Program provides Sacramento's strongest renter protections in city history, but it has only been in effect for less than two years, and largely due to the pandemic, has not been fully implemented. Until that happens, it's impossible to assess the program's successes or failures. This is the time for education and implementation, not evaluation, and we are ready to help with that endeavor. Undoubtedly, the pandemic has posed unprecedented financial challenges for both housing providers and their residents. The California Apartment Association will continue to educate our members on current state and local tenant protections, and urge the rental housing industry to act with patience and compassion when dealing with renters who have been financially impacted by COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, hello, my name is Catherine Bulte, and I'm a resident of District 5, and I'm also a member of Sacramento Tenant Union, as well as the Sacramento Eviction Defense Network. Between those two organizations, we've probably fielded calls from approximately 150 tenants this year seeking advice about issues that have arisen with their landlords. Unfortunately, what we've heard from most of those tenants has been that the TPP has been, at best, ineffective and unresponsive, and at worst, actually giving them incorrect information on numerous occasions about their rights and the protections available to them as tenants. I think it's really important that the TPP serves as a program that actually supports tenants rather than sort of like really just pushing tenants off and protecting landlords. And I also think it's important to simplify the protections that tenants are covered under in the city by enacting an eviction moratorium and a rent freeze, so that some of these complicated questions of who's covered don't even need to be addressed because no one can get evicted and no one's rent can be raised. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, and thank you, councilmembers, and a big welcome to the new councilmembers. I'm Erin Teague, on behalf of the Sacramento Association of Realtors. While we know COVID-19 has put an extreme burden on our already strained rental housing market, we want to caution any additional changes to the current tenant protection program before it has had a chance to be fully implemented and evaluated. As we see from the report, even in the midst of the setbacks that COVID-19 has brought, city staff has worked tirelessly to make sure that this program continues to move forward, yet the program has not been completely implemented in a way that can be fairly assessed. Currently, the state is negotiating and likely to extend current COVID-19-related rental protections. We encourage the city to defer to the state, as it will provide consistency for our small housing providers, so they can implement the ever-changing regulations that they are often left to navigate on their own while they're trying to stay compliant. We look forward to our continued partnership with city staff to educate the rental housing industry on the Tenant Protection Program as it is all rolled out. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Johanna, and I was evicted from my home in District 4 during the pandemic as a direct result of reaching out to the Tenant Protection Program. I'm very concerned about the program staff's dishonest claim in their report that they have received no pre eviction hearing requests. I requested a hearing twice before I was evicted and was told both times that there was no hearing process set up as recently as July 2020. I first reached out to the program when my landlord sent me a letter saying he didn't intend to renew my lease because the city had put a lien on his property after I reported the numerous structural, electrical, fire, and environmental hazards at the house that he refused to correct. The staff told me there was nothing they could do to help me because even though the term of my lease was longer than one year, given that my landlord sent a letter stating that his intent not to review prior to one year of residency, it was a murky legal area, and they had not yet set up a hearing process. With no help from the city, I wrote a letter to my landlord stating that this was illegal retaliation. In response, he retracted his notice of non-renewal and agreed in writing to continue our housing agreement. After months of accepting our rent, he gave us a new eviction notice with the justification that he was selling the property. When I reached out this time, the city attorney's office sent a letter to my landlord telling him that selling the property was not a just cause for eviction. He then called the city attorney and claimed that he had terminated our lease prior to one year of residency, and the city attorney's office then told him it would be legal for him to evict us. When I called to explain the situation, the person I spoke with shouted at me, told me to just move out if I didn't like the house, and hung up the phone on me. With city staff advising my landlord on how to evict us, my roommates and I all moved out against our wishes. I now live in a subletted cottage where I pay a much higher rent, and I'm about to have to move for the second time during this pandemic. Program staff provided me with false information and improper legal advice, and they generally dismissed me as being hysterical for wanting to remain in my home. At a minimum, I would like to see a clear, transparent complaint process for aggrieved tenants. I would also like to see staff who are knowledgeable about basic California housing law, who have actually read the city ordinance at least as many times as I have, and
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
I have much more to share, and I would like to also express my great disappointment that no affected tenants or advocates were invited to speak on the agenda at this meeting. Thank you for your time, and thank you to Councilmember Valenzuela for requesting this meeting in the first place.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Doug Johnson, I'm with the Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association, WMA. We represent the owners and operators of mobile home parks throughout California. Mobile home parks are governed by state law, the mobile home residency law. Under the MRL, all mobile home park residents currently enjoy robust just cause eviction protections. These protections have been in place for decades. Additionally, most mobile home park residents have paid their rent in full and on time throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. There are very few arrears. In situations where a delinquency has occurred, park owners work with their residents. It is always their goal to keep their residents safe and in their homes. If the council is aware of any isolated issues or concerns in Sacramento's mobile home communities, WMA stands ready to help. Working together, we can tackle any problem without amending or expanding current city regulations like the TPP. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, all, this is Ibrahim with ACE again, I'm back. I think these two agenda items are inextricably linked, and so I'm glad that we're addressing them together. I think we can't talk about a master plan without also having a plan to keep people housed in their homes. We are really close to an eviction cliff where folks stand to lose the housing that they have, and a pattern that I see is that oftentimes there'll be an abdication of responsibility when it comes to our elected officials, you know, pointing at the county, or pointing at the governor, the governor got it. And I just want us to, you know, step into that role of leadership, right, and pass an eviction moratorium so that all tenants can be housed, and make sure that there is debt conversion for tenants who are unable to pay due to COVID-19. Also in support of debt relief, provide rent relief funds for needy landlords, make sure that we cancel rent debt for tenants who are unable to pay because of COVID. And I just want to say, you know, respectfully, Councilmember Ashby, you know, I don't believe that it's fair to say that the city has been swinging for the fences. You know, I think, again, really humanizing the issue and the fact that, you know, lives are at stake here, people have lost income, people are not sure that they're gonna have, you know, a home to be in, you're gonna be hearing stories, you've heard stories already of what people are facing with the current protections that exist, so we need to do more, and, you know, game analogies aren't it, because this is real life for all people involved. So yeah, I want to encourage that we push forward with the councilmembers' recommendations and support all those things that I mentioned.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, City Council. Thank you for taking the time to speak on this. My name is T, I am a resident of J. Schreiner's District. And in October, my landlord tried to evict us, it was a termination of tenancy, I think that's, the language is different. And without really just cause, and we had to reach out to lawyers and the community to seek support. But I want to really talk about more the nuance of the situation of the dynamics between landlords and tenants, it's like really difficult, especially with housing instability and the relationship between tenants and landlords, it could be very intimidating. And so the approach is very difficult, so I feel like there isn't enough education in terms of tenant rights, and what the city can't provide. Because landlords are protected, they have lawyers, and you know, they can do, you know, and as tenants, we don't really know our rights, and we aren't sure where to, who, and who to reach out to, so I feel like there isn't enough there for tenants. And in my situation, the landlord backed off, since we delivered letters from a lawyer saying that was illegal, but I fear for my housing stability currently and what our landlord will pursue, even though there are, you know, protections in place. And I worry about my neighbors and people who don't know that these protections are in place and who to reach out to. I have a friend who was kicked out of their place with nothing, and yeah, it's absolutely ridiculous, and I just need you to see how mental health plays into this, how homelessness plays into this, and how all that is like, you know, there's so much in play here, and so
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I, there's not enough being done, and I need you all to hear more stories of tenants going through this problem.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland, I also belong to the Sacramento Tenant Union and the Sacramento Eviction Defense Network. What Catherine Bulte said is correct. LA County Board of Supervisors voted on Tuesday to extend the ban on evictions from the end of January to February 28th. That is not long enough, but I think we can do better than the LA County Board of Supervisors. Also, AB 15 will have to pass on a two-thirds vote because it's an emergency clause by the end of January? Or you're gonna see a lot of people getting evicted, and a lot of those people are becoming homeless, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Ben Hadley, I'm in Council District 4, and I'm a member of the Sacramento Eviction Defense Network. I just want to direct the Mayor and City Council's attention to the letter that Sacramento Eviction Defense Network sent earlier today with recommendations about changes to the Tenant Protection Program, and also just want to make it very clear that I know something that happens a lot with legislative bodies like this, is that there's a tendency to kind of try to obscure things, to muddy the waters about these protections and what kind of power the City Council has in relation to other governments in the area, and I want to make it very clear that if the City Council chooses to not strengthen the Tenant Protection Program and not listen to the recommendations of the Eviction Defense Network, it is a choice to put families in Sacramento out on the street during a global pandemic, and, you know, and it's gonna be a dark mark coming in a few months when the eviction moratoriums are up on the City Council. And, you know, conversely, City Council has a choice tonight to strengthen the Tenant Protection Program and be an example to cities around the state and around the country, and do the right thing. And, you know, the City Council could tonight choose to actually bring some light and bring some hope to all of us during this very dark time. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name's Claire Talber, I'm from District 4, I'm a student and a tenant and a member of the Sacramento Eviction Defense Network. I wanted to just call to voice how important strengthening our existing protections are for tenants. We've talked a lot about homelessness tonight, and I think preventing evictions is like a super instrumental component of this. The Tenant Protection Program, as it functions right now, is letting a lot of people fall through the cracks. The most vulnerable people are the people who usually have the most complex cases, and these are the ones often discarded by the limited resources of the program. The level of communication provided to at-risk tenants is just not adequate. I can use the case of the Hawthorne Suites, of which both the EDN and the TPP worked on as an example. While the Attorney's Office stepped up to the plate here, and it was a victory for the tenants for sure, I know from personal conversations directly with the tenants is that they were completely in the dark about the city's actions until they heard from the Eviction Defense Network, or they saw the news, or they got a notice from the landlords on their door. This lack of communication and just like being in the dark led to extreme anxiety of the unknown, which can lead to negative health effects of these tenants. I don't think that volunteers should have been the first people to reach out to them personally, especially on a mass eviction such as this, but even on a smaller scale. I realize that the human power needed for this communication, dedication, and care to detail is really large, and I know the staff at the Tenant Protection Program is really small. I just think this highlights that there's a need for either more staff, more power, or a more efficient and standardized communication pathway that includes follow-up with tenants, especially like high-risk tenants, or essentially both of these things, more people, and a better pathway of communication. Thanks for your time, good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Sage, good evening, my name is Leah, I'm in Weisberg, and I am the Legal Director with the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. I have been a tenant attorney for almost two decades, and have practiced in the majority of cities that have rent control and just cause. Recently, I was asked to review the, not only just all of the tenant protections that Sacramento has, and we did this across the state with actually all major urban cities. And Sacramento has the weakest protections for tenants, only beat out by Fresno and Bakersfield. One of the reasons that the protections are so weak is that you, unlike almost every other city, don't have even the basics of inclusionary zoning. But in a review particularly of the program, there's actually no other program that has any kind of tenant protection that has fewer staff in the state, and that is a great concern. You know, Oakland, which is considered one of the leanest programs, has one staff for 10,000 units, while you have in the range of, it seems from your report, a much worse ratio. ratio. But a manager that's not full-time and two administrative staff is just not, it's completely out of step. And really encourage an increase in in-house counseling, the turning, bringing in and contracting out while, you know, allied nonprofits, that has been tried in other places and eventually was moved in-house, and was really encourage that so that you can have the extensive training that is necessary. Also, you know, when it comes to outreach, again, I would encourage Sacramento staff to reach out to any of the other programs really across the state, because all have actually developed quite good outreach.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. And I think there is hope, but there's a lot of work to be done, and we hope that that can do it. And obviously, ACE, particularly in the other tenant groups, are here to provide the additional technical assistance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, thank you. Mayor Steinberg, city council members, and I want to thank specifically Councilmember Valenzuela for all of her work. And I want to say, this is Felisa Campos with the Eviction Defense Network, and I want to say something completely different than what I was calling in for. But Mayor Steinberg, you sat up there the majority of the evening and talked about a state of emergency and how people should not be dying on the streets and that this is something that needs to be taken care of. Yet, you have consistently asked, again, the people that are most affected by this to come to you over and over with the answers. In addition to Councilmember Valenzuela, multiple people have called in with answers and suggestions and years of work and research and answers, and yet you refuse to listen. And now we are facing a crisis where thousands of more families are going to be on the streets, and you are ill-prepared to even deal with the people that we have now. And the fact, rents need to be canceled. There needs to be relief for homeowners that are still kind enough to house their tenants. There needs to be an answer, there needs to be assistance. The city is not doing enough. The organizations that are providing help do not have enough funding. And people, even if they get rental assistance, it's a few hundred dollars, which is not enough. People are going to be on the streets, Mayor Steinberg, and you are making a conscious decision for more people to die on your watch. It is appalling, it is insulting to all of the people that are in your circle, all of the people that are calling in and telling you what to do, that are begging you to ask people to call in and share their stories, to marginalize people again to come and pour their hearts out to you for a little bit of crumbs. It is insulting.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, do more, cancel rents, open a healing center, house people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Dolfine Brody. I'm a constituent of District Six and an organizer with the Sacramento Eviction Defense Network and the Trans Non-Binary Housing Collective. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for introducing this item. It is critical that the city upgrade its Tenant Protection Relief Act. The current tenant protections are grossly inadequate, as Leah pointed out, some of the worst in the state above cities our size. And in our work reaching out to tenants who were in distress during the pandemic, we have heard from only a few who sought the aid of the tenant protection program. In every case, they were extremely disappointed, and either there was no response from the staff of the program, or they encountered dismissal and were referred to other agencies where they did not get the assistance they needed. We would like to see particular steps taken to strengthen the ordinance, the Tenant Protection Relief Act. We want to see the protections from rent increases that exceed 5% plus the previous year's rate of increase in the CPI extended to all tenants who have resided in a rental unit for at least 30 days, and not just those with 12 hours or more residency. And the same for the just cause eviction protection. We want to see the loopholes in just cause closed so that there is more justice and more protection from unjust evictions. And we also want to see the program's accessibility and effectiveness improved greatly.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
For tenants to file complaints, as well as implementing the hearing process as described in the ordinance, and training staff to respond to tenant complaints.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I know that the newest members of the city council are definitely listening intently to the plight of ordinary tenants and homeowners that are struggling right now, not just under the unprecedented conditions created by COVID, but also the skyrocketing prices and rent rates and mortgage rates that continue to increase in Sacramento City. And I'm just wondering whether some of you are even paying attention to this, much less care about it. I'm pretty certain that Angela Gassby doesn't really care that much about it, but, I mean, a lot of you too that are sitting on that council right now...
No, no, avoid the personal attacks, man. Avoid the personal attacks.
...calling in right now complaining. I'm sorry, are you interrupting me?
Yes, I am, sir. I'm urging you to avoid the personal attacks of members. Yes, thank you.
Are you taking my time away right now? Is that what you're doing?
You can add it back. Add back the, add back the 30 seconds, please.
Sir, your time has been paused.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that, but honestly, like, your outrage really doesn't mean that much to me, because I know for a fact that there has been countless people that have called in the city council begging you all to take serious action to protect, like renters and ordinary homeowners that are at risk of eviction, and you've done virtually nothing about it. That tenant protection you passed two years ago was watered-down poultry crap that basically is a handout and reward to real estate developers that many, that probably you have connections to. You, of all people, Darrell, are Director Emeritus of the Power and Alliance. Jeff Harris, you have a staff member, David Goncalves, that is on the, that's representing the River City District. All places that are, like, that are, have been actively fighting basic tenant protections for so long. So as much, like, as outraged as you can be at, you know, attacks on specific council members, I just want to point out that as much outrage as you have at that, why don't you have outrage at thousands, 10,000 Sacramento who are at risk of eviction during this pandemic right now?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We need stronger rent protection, tenant protection, going into this, like, going into city council.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening. So I just want to say that this program, as it stands, is the most ironically named program I've heard. It should be called the Tenant Eviction Program or the Landlord Protection Program. Just to give you a brief history of what happened with me, is basically, I tried to reach out, I basically made a complaint to my landlord about some security health issues with my apartment, and basically the landlord decided to just evict me because of that. I tried to reach out to the Tenant Protection Program. I called them more than 50 times for a period of more than two weeks, and no one replied. I left numerous messages on the voicemail, which was the only thing I could find, and nothing basically happened. I later learned that basically what they did is we're working directly with my landlord to help convince him that they could actually evict me, and that's basically what happened effectively. And as it stands, this program provides no protection for tenants. All it does is basically sugarcoat a pretty bad system. And I think basically the solution to that, the beginning solution to that, is to increase the transparency of how they conduct these actions, like these communications with landlords and tenants. And the second thing, for staff to be trained to be less by, so replaced by more competent staff who can serve the mission of this program rather than try to curry favor with the landlord. Anyways, thanks, and I hope these changes happen, because City Sacramento is a great city, and this program has the potential to be really good, but as it currently stands, it really just does nothing impact, does negative effect. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers on this side. Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela, of course, who asked the under we brought forward. We're not debating the rent control ordinance overall tonight. There isn't an action item before us, but I'd like Councilmember Valenzuela to talk a little bit about what she would like to see, and then we can talk about how to ensure that the issues raised by our constituents and the issues that you raise can be vetted in her.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. And I, some of the pain and anguish you're hearing in these calls is a sample of what I've heard throughout the last year. Folks are anxious, they're scared. And so I really appreciate the time today, and in the spirit of our former colleague, Mr. Carr, I actually have slides. They're very short slide deck, but I really thought of him a lot today as I was working with partners to get that through, to help make the point, and working with ACE and other allies to kind of make the slideshow for us so that we could talk a little bit about what's going on. And some of this will be a recap on what the staff said. But just to quickly go over, I mean, the protections have expired. We are allowed to do our own thing. I know there was a lot of discussion about city-state bills that are pending right now. It can be tempting to wait, but this is less than a month away, and this is a cliff that's coming straight at us, and I think we have a real opportunity to act in advance. The tenants who can't pay their rent, obviously, they're only protected through the end of this month. There's also other loopholes that folks are falling through, and so we really, I think that, and there's a sort of implicit point that I want to make sure is clear, that like, landlords are going to receive no money if they evict folks on January 31st who can't pay. And so I think there's a lot of shared interest here to figure out a solution that is really going to work well for everybody. So the first eviction, and this really comes in the bucket, like, there's a bucket for me of like what we, I think we should be doing to deal with the COVID-related debt and the eviction moratorium that's really just stayed the problem. And then there's a last bucket I'll mention briefly about policy changes I think we should consider. But the first is a broad eviction moratorium. There's a lot of reasons folks can't prove that they've lost income because of COVID, either because they're undocumented, either because they're gig workers, I mean, maybe they didn't file it in time. So we don't want folks to fall through those cracks, and maybe just having a broad eviction moratorium, except for health and safety reasons, is the cleanest and most effective way to ensure that folks aren't being evicted because they had COVID-related impacts. The second that you heard a couple callers mention, which is really fascinating, is this idea of debt conversion. So converting back owed debt into essentially consumer debt, so you're still owed the debt, but you could essentially like renegotiate the terms of repayment to that debt with the landlord, and it is no longer a reason that someone can be evicted. This is something that other cities in California have tried and it's modeled off of what's in 3088. So we could declare this, and we can do this as a city. It's been done in a few other cities and could really help ensure that folks can't be evicted and get a timeline for rebuilding, because just because you might get a job back doesn't mean you can pay back, you know, $12,000 or however much money you owe from not being able to pay rent over the last several months. The third recommendation is to strengthen LS regulations. This is a broad thing in general, that, you know, just because someone says they're removing it from the market, they could remove it from the market for two days and then turn around and release it to somebody else, and technically that still falls under the protection. So we do have the authority as a city to say that it has to be removed from the market for a certain amount of time, like a year, so that we kind of close that loophole where folks may remove it from the market to sell a building and then say, okay, now you can lease fresh and start rents new and kind of backdoor way around the rent protections that we've put in place for tenants. Fourth is debt relief. Obviously, we've done a little bit of this through the Care Back Money, and I thank you all for doing that, but we also know that it was way oversubscribed. I know S.H.R. could probably talk about the number of applications received. We know there's a lot of interest in getting some money back for folks who just aren't going to be able to repay the money that they have back owed. But a fourth, a fifth option, oh, sorry, and then there's the rent freeze, which is just to also freeze the rent rate, which folks have talked about during the emergency, so that we don't see any increases for anybody regardless of how long they've been in their unit, so that we can try to stave off some of the impact that folks are experiencing in this time. And then finally, I want to just talk broadly about tenant protection program ideas, because I do think there are some things that we've learned and just some common sense changes that we could make if we are willing to look at that broader program. The first, as was mentioned by a few, is that we should be expanding protections to folks who've been in a unit for 30 days. I like to talk to some landlords about, like, you know, you're not looking for a romantic relationship, you know, waiting a year doesn't really have a lot of policy justification. I think after 30 days, you should kind of know if things are working out or not working out, and if you were entering a business agreement with anybody else, you would expect protections to kick in earlier than a year. And so that's one major bucket I think worth exploring. As was mentioned before, partnering with community groups to improve the transparency of the process and improve outreach. And I think you heard staff talk about their goal of improving outreach this year and really making sure folks understand what their rights are, and I think the community partners who called in tonight and the groups who have been doing a lot of work on the ground can really provide a lot of good partnership in that. Ensuring that tenants are receiving legal assistance, I know we've put some money into Liznick and others, but that is something that folks want to make sure is strengthened, maybe in an ongoing way. Potentially reexamining fees and penalties, because we are hearing a lot of troubling stories, a few of which you've heard where landlords just kind of do it anyways and kind of wait and see if somebody files a complaint, and, you know, maybe if we had a different penalty structure in place, that would be less likely to happen. And then finally, my last point, talking about the data, and I know this is going to start, and I'm really excited for this to start, because we don't really know what we don't know. And right now, we're really dependent on the advocates and the apartment association and other to tell us numbers about who's been impacted, who's been helped, who's been evicted. And we really have an opportunity, I think, to go beyond just simple registration and maybe think about, you know, do we want more real-time data? You know, how do we make sure that we know when evictions are happening? We should, how do we collect data on when someone's experienced a loss of impact from COVID so that we can be more tuned in if a crisis is emerging or if there's an issue in implementation that we could address as a council? So I know I breezed right through that, but I also wanted to recognize the time, so I will stop sharing here and happy to talk more about any of those.
So first of all, I just want to thank you for being organized and bringing forward specific ideas and recommendations. And again, tonight, I don't want to debate the merits, but I do think when a member brings forward a set of ideas to improve an existing ordinance or to create new ordinance, that they need to know that there is a process by which their ideas are going to be heard. And so I've talked to Councilmember Schneer, who is going to remain the Chair of the Law and Legislation Committee, and I'm going to ask him to work with you to hold a law and ledge hearing forthwith on these ideas, because we are in the midst of a housing crisis. I don't know that I, I don't know which parts of what you brought forward I would support or not at this point. I want to study it. I do know that what is crucial is that the state extend the eviction moratorium beyond January the 31st. I mean, that is absolutely crucial, because nothing we do locally is going to address the magnitude of the problem if that doesn't happen. And so one of the things I think is we ought to get law and ledge, and I'll sign, we ought to get a letter off right away to the legislature and the governor that strongly encourages that they do just that. But let's tee it up, and let's give the ideas that you have brought forward, you have brought forward to the Law and Ledge Committee, okay? forward, you have brought forward to, to the law and ledge committee, okay? Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, no, I think it's great. I think as newbies, it's good to know what the process is. I don't know what the appointments are, so I look forward to hearing back regarding the appointments, Mayor. But I did just first wanted to thank all the folks who called in during public comment. Also want to thank city staff for their presentation and thank Councilmember Valenzuela for doing her presentation. I think for me in particular, as I was listening to staff, I actually just actually have some questions around just, just to get clarity about the current program that we do have. It does sound like there are some like system issues. And as I'm listening to the public comments, it sounds like there are some gaps in the current program that we have. When I was reading the report, even though it was passed last year, it sounds like we are still implementing the program, but I would just wanted to get clarity really quick and I wanted to make sure I heard that correctly, that how many folks or how many tenants in particular have we touched or have contacted the city of Sacramento? I think I heard 3,000, but maybe that was like a different number. Could I get clarity on that?
So we've had about 3,200 inquiries overall. In terms of the number of tenants that we've spoken to, from March through December, we had about 1,300 telephone calls and about 700 emails that were directly from tenants. And that's residential tenants. We've also heard from commercial tenants. So we've had about 74 commercial tenants who contacted us and 95 via email. And that's what we started tracking when staff came on board. We also had folks that contacted us prior to our staff coming on board and we really had the ability to track when we actually were providing assistance with code staff before the actual staff was hired. So the, the challenge that we face and what's really kind of difficult is that as we, having everything happen with COVID, our staff was really on board for such a short period of time. Some of the technical implement systems that we need to put in place to really track, we haven't been able to do. And so what we're really hoping is being able to work that because having people work remotely, not being able to go back in the office, you know, our IT staff does an amazing job, but they've been redirected to do other things. So we've really been trying to hit miss and do as much as we can with the resources that we have. So what we're really hoping is within the next few months to be able to get our database system more robust so we can really use the case management features to provide much better information in terms of contacts, reporting out. But we're really trying to focus on undoing that. And one of the reasons why we're doing it now is because we agree with Councilmember Valenzuela. We really do see that the evictions and the whole issue when the moratorium ends is going to really impact us and we know there's going to be a tremendous increase in inquiries and questions. So we really want to take the time that we had to get the system in place so we could do a better job with the system so that when things were happening, we could even be more responsive.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because, I mean, I, I was listening to the public comments and I think a stakeholder had mentioned that we haven't even implemented it, but it sounds like you, we've already made 32 touches. And I'm, I'm interested to know, I think, you know, as a city, we provide a service and it's really important when I think about, you know, the, the loop around or closing the case, right? Or, or customer satisfaction, you know? And I, I think as we, you know, adopt ordinance and implement policies and programs, it's really critical from a city service level to make sure that we actually do our due diligence in closing cases and engaging our constituents. Basically, are they satisfied with our service? And I don't know if we're collecting that data. I think that's really important as we move forward. You know, the mayor did say there is a process for us to, if we want to strengthen the ordinance, if a council member has ideas, but I know that is a process and it's not going to happen overnight. We got to go through law and ledge, but in the meantime, it does sound like there are gaps in the current program that we have now. And as I'm listening to the public comments, there are a lot of frustration and I want to make sure that, you know, we have some kind of system set up for, for constituent services to make sure that we, we close those cases or hear from them directly of what worked and what didn't work so that we could do better as a city to serve constituents in the city. And so I would say definitely like the data piece is absolutely critical because if we don't collect that, we're not going to know how we're doing. We can have a tenant protection program, but if it's not, we don't have the data to show how impactful it can be, then I don't know what we're doing, right? So I think it's really important that we make sure we collect that data. I do understand that we are in the middle of COVID and so everyone's transitioning. But this is like one of the top priorities that I recall, you know, during the campaign, Councilmember Valenzuela and I did, did our own survey in our community and, and this was one of the top issues, right? And I know many of y'all worked really hard on the current ordinance now, but it does seem like there are gaps and we definitely, there's a lot of work needed to strengthen it. But on, for right now, since it's going to go to law and ledge and hopefully, you know, the presentation, the recommendation that Councilmember Valenzuela presented, I know that's going to take time, but for now, I think the data piece is really critical in the current program we have. Because I didn't see the 32 inquiries in the report. I wanted to actually know, like, have we touched folks? Have we responded to them? Because I'm hearing from folks that we're, we're still implementing the program or it hasn't been implemented yet from, from certain stakeholders. And then I'm hearing that we've already made touches and so I'm just trying to get more clarity on that piece, so.
And I'd like to clarify a few things. One of the things is in terms of a formal hearing process, we don't have that in place yet. But what I can say is that one of my other roles is that I manage the hearing staff. And so if we had a person that truly needed a pre eviction hearing, we would have had the abilities and could have easily pulled together an ad hoc hearing. That hasn't been something that has come up because one of the things we've been effective in doing is that we've worked very well with our city attorney's office and we've been able to provide letters to folks. So the gentleman who actually talked about how he had worked with an attorney and done a letter, our city attorney's office has done that and we've done that with people who have had illegal rent increases where someone has increased the rent. They've provided us with information that they had the rent increase. We followed with the landlord with a letter from the city attorney's office. They rescinded that rent increase. Same thing with eviction notices where people have contacted us, said that their landlord issued an eviction notice. We had issued a letter from the city attorney's office that eviction notice was rescinded. So we've taken action and worked on tenants' behalf when we needed to follow up and do different things. So has it been perfect? It's an imperfect world and COVID has made it more of a challenge and we're, and we're really doing our best to get everything going and moving forward. We really look forward. We met with folks from the Sacramento Defense Network earlier this week. We've met with folks from SEIU. We've met with folks from the Housing Alliance. We work very well with our partners with Sacramento Self Help Housing. We're really working on a communication plan because we want to put together information that we can share with council members, to share with their community. So we're really trying to, in a very short period of time, really trying to get everything going. And so our staff is really working diligently and we really welcome any input. I manage a number of programs. One of the things I always realize is programs can always be improved. And so we're always looking for really good input and how we can coordinate with people to improve our program and enhance our outreach.
Yeah, no, Tina, I just want to say thank you for your work. I mean, another piece is also capacity, right? Like, do you have the capacity and staff to, to, to deliver the services? You know, that's also really important because then you're really strapped as well. And I also think it's important to do bright spots, right? Like, if there are cases that you have been able to help, I mean, I need to know that as a councilwoman, like what's worked and what hasn't worked. That's really important so that you can be able to share that information with the full council as well. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great discussion, important discussion and a timely one. And so we will work out.
Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Gara and myself both still have our hands up.
I apologize. Go ahead. Councilmember Geta first, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, it's late night, but first I want to just thank Tina. Thank you for all your work. It's been a difficult task starting a new program right at the beginning of this. So I do want to thank all your staff for that. And it is at the beginning of the program, so we're going to discuss more of that once it comes through the process. I do want to recommend to the city manager and to Tina, within your authority, when we first approved the program, we allocated also $100,000, I think, or it might've been 150,000, I can't remember the number, the Sacramento Self Help Housing for their renters' hotline. And as this program moves on into implementate, into further implementation, I think that the, that, that Mr. City Manager, maybe this is direction here, to look at an additional augmentation of, of that for the Sacramento Self Help Housing renters hotline. Not only that, not only to assist us in the outreach of this program, but they do provide a lot of support on other renters' issues and questions. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Last word, Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, and I think Councilmember Harris also raised his hand. I know it's late, but I did just want to say broadly, you know, I am aware of, of the law and ledge process and I think there was a real reason why I wanted to bring this to a full council meeting today. And that is because it's less than three meetings away from when we would need to adopt something, if we were going to do something in time for the eviction moratorium expiration on January 31st. So I do hope that, and you know, defer to Councilmember Chenier, if we can agendize this maybe for next week's law and ledge meeting. I'm not sure what the agenda looks like, but I was hoping for just, and given how quickly it needs to move, I think just looking for a pulse check on where folks were on the broader councils so we could try to move quickly as possible.
Well, first of all, I, I'm going to say something. You assume that the state legislature is going to completely fail in their responsibility to extend that eviction moratorium. And if they do, which I don't believe they will, we are in big trouble. We are in big, big trouble. And I, I want to put some of our effort here as a city council into exercising our voices to make sure that they know the consequences of not extending that eviction moratorium. They know it, by the way, and in my conversations with some of the lead members over there, they are going, they are going to address this prior to January 31st because it is bigger than anything we can do locally. And so, because it applies more broadly than what Costa Hawkins says our ordinance can, can cover in terms of units. And so I, I understand the desire to agenda, but you're going to have to work it out with Councilmember Chenier here in terms of, in terms of when he chooses to agendize it.
Yeah, and, and I just, I mean, to be clear, I don't assume anything about what the legislature will do. I, I hope as you do and have a lot of hope and confidence that they'll do something. I think what we're seeing with other cities though, across the state, is sort of the preemptive measures. How do we create that safety net? And how do we deal with repayment? Because that is something that I know has been a tough question to solve at the state level and make maybe providing that certainty for tenants that they don't have to wait and see how things go and also kind of dealing with that longer term question. But I just want to make it clear, I don't doubt and I really support and appreciate the interest in urging the legislature and using our voice for that purpose. I think that will be really important.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first I'd like to say thank you to you for stating that not everything falls on the shoulders of the city. This is a big calamity, Katie. You know, evictions statewide, countrywide, due to the pandemic is, it's just a huge issue. Now, as far as the ordinance that we have adopted, it may have some failings, but it also has some successes. And a case in point is Ezra Low and Hawthorne Suites. You know, the, the city attorney's office sprang into action when they saw something that they thought was inappropriate. And in reaction to that, Ezra Low Company has hired a relocation company and is providing very substantial assistance to help relocate people there. You know, there are wins and there are losses. And I think it's important, you know, when we listen to advocates talk about how the system is failing, there are, there are also wins and a lot of people are going to be very well taken care of out of the Hawthorne Suites. I just wanted to put in that plug because no ordinance is perfect. It's always fair to try to fine tune and make them stronger and better, but it's also fair to point to our successes. And I think that we really had one here in the River District and I, I, I think that we've created a good player in the, in the space and that at least in that particular circumstance, we will have a good outcome.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. That concludes the formal part of the agenda, but since this is the first meeting of the new year, the tradition and the rules of procedure say that the mayor puts forward a slate of committee appointments, of vice mayor, mayor pro tem, and that the following week, the city council confirms those appointments. And so I'd ask, we're not going to have the city clerk read every single one of the appointments. I know I've had a chance to talk to, to a number of you, but Madam Clerk, what, what do you need to read into the record here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to share my screen with the JPA appointments and I will follow up with an email to council members after this meeting. For 2021, for vice mayor is Councilmember Jay Chenier and for mayor pro tem is Angelique Ashby. And as the mayor stated, both this merrill appointments roster and those two will come back at our next meeting for, for full council approval. Lastly, I have board and commission appointments to read into the record quickly. Active Transportation Commission, Ally Dewar Westbrook. Major U Community Advisory Committee, Dana Kivell. Parks and Community Enrichment Commission, Louis Kai Herman. Planning Design Commission, Tyron Buckley. To the Sacramento Arts, Culture and Creative Economy Commission, Cecily Hastings, Cruz Noronjo, L. Stephen Winlock, Priscilla Enrique, Melinda Wilson Rami. To the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, Keon Bliss. And finally, to the Sacramento Youth Commission, Naomi Piper Powell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you so much. All right, are there, is there public testimony and items not on the agenda?
I have six callers.
Okay.
May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, hello. My name is Jennifer Holden. I'm a homeowner in District Five. And hello, Jay. And welcome all the new council members and hi, Katie. I am calling tonight with a concern and three requests. The concern is that I have heard that there are one zoning in Sacramento may be eliminated and therefore I have, and I'm opposed to that. And so I have three requests for the mayor and the council members of Sacramento. The first request is that the next vote in the process, which is for the land use map, be indefinitely postponed until, two, all council members meet with their neighborhood associations about eliminating R1 zoning and the council members express their ideas and concerns to their constituents about R1 zoning. And three, on the January 19 city council agenda, there will be a public forum item without a council vote regarding the elimination of R1 zoning. And thank you very much. Please remember that we look forward to having our council members represent our interests. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon. My name is Daphne Harris. I just wanted to thank the council for hanging in there for the night and I just wanted to add some suggestions on housing and planning going forward. We kind of have a pipeline that's going to go into homelessness based on what our median incomes are, what our medium housing prices are and what, we kind of need to look at those numbers and develop some housing for those who are making $15 an hour to a couple or a couple that makes $30 an hour, the basic level of housing that they can afford. Need to look at those numbers because they're offset and you're going to have a lot of people moving and planning into homelessness just because the numbers just don't pan out. There's not enough inventory of housing at a level that people can afford. So I just kind of want the, the council to take those numbers into consideration when they're looking at zoning and planning and design. And we didn't get into this position overnight. You have to plan your way out of things and you have to have a vision long term beyond what's going to happen in the next 18 months. I'm looking to the council to do a little bit more visionary planning and looking at increasing income, increasing employment in the area, making good land use decisions. And when you're getting subdivisions to developers, insisting that they become community partners, providing community services within the subdivision, providing homeless services within their subdivision, and then allowing them to make the additional income that they need to make on the houses that they present to the council, let's just sum it up.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, yeah, this is Johanna again, the one who was evicted after contacting the tenant protection program and now a member of the Sacramento Eviction Defense Network as well as ACE. I wanted to draw your attention and request action on another matter that is affecting tenants during this pandemic. I wanted to draw your attention and request action on another matter that is affecting tenants during this pandemic. So the code violations at my former home that ultimately got, got me kicked out after I reported them are still outstanding a year later because of a troubling loophole in city procedure. My former landlord, if you look at the public record, there's documentation of him bragging to the city building inspector that someone from the city staff, I don't remember exactly who he said, told him that he should frivolously appeal his code enforcement case because the Housing Code Advisory and Appeals Board has suspended meetings since March twenty twenty. I believe they've only had one meeting. And he can't be fined or forced to take any action until they resume those hearings. So he basically, he disputed one of the more than ten violations at the property on the grounds that the violation occurred before he bought the property, which apart from being false, is not even valid grounds for an appeal. So now, a year later, the violations are outstanding, and some of these include, you know, missing smoke alarms. And there's now, after I got evicted, a young family with some kids moved in there, and now they're living there without smoke alarms. And I don't believe that this is something that requires a full hearing, but, and I, I, I don't understand why the hearings have been completely canceled. I mean, we're doing this by Zoom, and also I don't know why a, a hearing is required to put in smoke alarms and take care of those other minor things, or why a frivolous appeal that doesn't even have a valid argument behind it was accepted in the first place. So I would like to see something about that as well, about looking into tenants being forced to live in substandard conditions, particularly with, you know, the fear that if you report it to the city, you're gonna get evicted and nobody's gonna step up to protect you. So thank you again for your time. Good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Well, I, I think Katie's gonna be a great city council member. Mayor Staubert, on the other hand, should not interrupt people when they're speaking. I mean, that is rude. He's done it to me in the past. He's done it to Richard Wake. He's done it tonight to people. Mayor Staubert, do you know how to run a meeting? I don't think you do. I would, I would suggest you to resign from being a mayor of Sacramento because you cannot follow the Constitution. Damn, I'm speech. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, thanks for taking my call. Richard Wake, City Council, District Five. I'm calling on another issue that I briefly touched with, with Councilmember Valenzuela on a couple of issues. At the meeting where all the new city council members were sworn in in December, Councilmember Valenzuela brought up the issue of hate groups coming into Sacramento and wanted a report back from the police department as to what was gonna be happening when these hate groups come back to Sacramento. I'm sure all of you are aware tomorrow that the Proud Boys are having a rally at the State Capitol tomorrow at nine AM. And, you know, in light of, you know, the Electoral College votes being tomorrow and the very, very close election that I've been flipping back and forth with on CNN and this city council meeting tonight, it's long overdue that the city of Sacramento and this city council, along with other elected officials, make it unambiguously clear in the public statement that the Proud Boys, Boogaloo Boys, and all these other hate groups, some of which are going into Chavez Park and beating up homeless people, are not welcome in Sacramento. You know, if it was up to me, if I was making the decision, every freeway off ramp and major city street in downtown that has access to the Capitol would be closed and blocked off tomorrow. And these people would be unambiguously just told they're not welcome. So I'm hoping sometime soon a clear statement is gonna be made to these hate groups by the entire city council and perhaps our other elected officials, that hate is not welcome in Sacramento. We literally have a legitimate overthrow of our government being taken right before our eyes on television. And that needs to, that's, that's, it's terrible what's happening. But most definitely, these hate groups, these Proud Boys and, you know, Boogaloo Boys and all these other goofballs need to be told that they are publicly, by everyone, that they are not
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, yeah, that needs to be done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, my name is Lambert Davis, the founder and CEO of To The Bay and Back Cheesecakes, founded and based in Del Paso Heights, District Two. I would hope Mr. Loloey contacts me. I've emailed him on what we, what our plight is. Again, our number is nine one six three seven zero nine two one one. If you can write it down this quickly, I'm sure Mindy knows it. I call every week and I come to city council meetings. I also want to welcome the two city councilwomen, Vang and, and Valenzuela. I have also contacted your office to make you aware of our plight. We're a cheesecake business. We're family owned. This month will be a year since we submitted a proposal to the city manager's office, and we've had tremendous hostility from them. And we're looking for the support of the mayor who filed a lawsuit against Wells Fargo that inspired me. And I just wanted to say that this is an, an interesting time now. You, you're talking about a group that actually has guaranteed employment. You cannot make a cheesecake with a computer. You need people, and cheesecakes appeals to most races and both sexes. That's a, that's a recipe for creating jobs and helping people, specifically in Del Paso Heights, but cheesecakes can be sold anywhere. Mr. Loloey, I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly. I'll get it right one day. Our manufacturer is in Huntington Beach, which means there's potential to do business in Southern California and Northern California in the great Golden State. And by the way, my family has been in Sacramento since nineteen forty-six. That's probably before
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I hope you call me, City Councilman Loloey.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And this is our last caller this evening. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, PJ. I'd like to know what's being done with the white supremacists, the Proud Boys, who seem to have endless support from law enforcement every weekend, where they act more as protection for the white supremacists than for those protesting against white supremacy. As such, I see nowhere near the same level of response to them and their aggression as I did during the protests. People protesting the unlawful killing and endless getting off of scot-free for many consequences, police were met with tear gas, rubber bullets, and arrests if they were lucky and not run over as protesters were in far too many cities. But now people protesting stay-at-home and mask orders meant to protect the public health are joining with a known far-right white supremacist group and are being met with protection from the police, where counter protesters assaulted by the white supremacists are inexplicably arrested, while nearly no arrests occurring on the other side. It would lead one to believe that the cops and white supremacists have something in common and as such see no issues with their actions. Something needs to be done sooner rather than later. Police actions need to be documented and questions asked and action taken when their failure to act gives tacit approval to the actions being taken by white supremacists in our community and from surrounding communities. This is not us, and this needs to be quelled before it is allowed to balloon, as has occurred in our nearby states where groups of white supremacists have been growing due to a lack of adequate police response. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
All right, thank you very much, members of the public. Are there council ideas and questions before we adjourn? I know Jay Chenier has an adjourned in memory. We can save that for last.
I've got two adjourned in memories as well.
Okay, that's great. Are there any, any other ideas and questions? Councilmember Loloey.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. At this point, I would like to ask the city manager and the city attorney's office to look into a way of temporarily pausing on new cannabis licenses or businesses, either citywide or for just District Two. In District Two, due to the county pocket annexation, there's a unique patchwork zoning of commercial properties that are directly next to residential properties. And so there's a lot of concern from the community that they face greater exposure to their homes to cannabis than anywhere else in the city. There also seems to be an oversaturation of cannabis business in District Two. Given that it's been a few years since the city has adopted its cannabis regulation, I think it's fair to take a pause and look at those regulations to make sure that the outcome is what the city and District Two needs and desires. So I'm hoping that I can get some feedback on that. I would greatly appreciate it. This is gonna be a, a time that I'm asking for is approximately for twelve months. And so we can just wrap our hands around this industry and then come back even stronger moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, just briefly, wanna thank the city manager for the conversations that he's helped convene since I brought up a report back on the protest at the last meeting and that let the public know that those conversations are continuing towards a public item in the future. So, thank you.
Mayor, a brief comment, if I may?
Yes.
So the last caller made some assertions that I believe certainly to be patently false, that the city PD favor or protect the Proud Boys. You know, we did have a closed session in which we viewed a lot of video regarding recent protests. And I think that, that, that those assertions can be absolutely refuted. I don't think that anybody on this council is in support of white supremacist groups. And I would just like to say in defense of the PD that I certainly feel that they have mounted a pretty substantial and very thoughtful response to, to the demonstrations and have been very even-handed. And, and actually have provided a space for all people to express their views. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's Mayor Harris. Councilmembers Chenier and Garrett to close us off with the adjourned in memories.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I actually have something for the city manager first, and then I'll do my adjourn if I can. Mr. Chan, nice to see you. I have a number of questions about cares, and you don't have to write all this down. We'll, we'll send you a note on it. But I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, we can get an update. How much have we spent by funding category? What's the balance remaining of funds? How much funding was contracted out but not spent in total and, and by category as well? What's the process and criteria by which contract extensions will be offered? How will new programs that were launched using these funds and that are determined to be effective be continued for, be considered per continued support? So we did a lot of new things. Some of them worked really well. What are we doing about that, just so we know? And I know mid-year is coming up. And what's, what, what is the capacity of staff to work on these contract extension? So if we could do that fairly soon, that would be great. And then I want to adjourn, adjourn me, pull this up, sorry. In the memory of Ed La. Sorry. Anyway, I'll, I'll just say, Ed passed away last month. He was one of the people who started Golf Course Terrace Estate Community Association or Neighborhood Association. Really a wonderful man who spent a lot of time working on his neighborhood. He's survived by his wife Gloria. He was ill for a while. Unfortunately, had Alzheimer's, which is just a devastating disease, as we all know. But spent a lot of time, he worked for the state. But most importantly for us, just did a lot of, a lot of things for the community from umpiring at Airport Little League to participating in committees at Harkness Elementary School. Just a wonderful man who will be deeply missed. So our condolences go out to his wife Gloria. And we'll be thinking of him and thinking of some way that we can honor him in the neighborhood. So I'd like to talk to the Golf Course Terrace Board about that, about what we should do to make sure that people know what he did and what he meant to the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jay. In his memory, Councilmember Genna, bring us on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It saddens me to adjourn in memory of two giants in Sacramento and two amazing leaders in the Asian Pacific Islander community. I'll start by adjourning in memory of Georgette Murrah. On December seventeenth, our longtime community activist, mentor, dear friend, Georgette Murrah passed away peacefully surrounded by her family. An American of Japanese descent, she was born in, in the internment camp of Manzanar. She utilized her passion and politics wits to fight for the Japanese redress of World War II's incarceration and help the past legislation that saved the last remaining of Japantown in California. Georgette began her journey in public service as a receptionist in the California State Legislature. She served in numerous roles, moved up the ladder, and became a leader for, in twenty-eight years of service, including Staff Director for the Senate Democratic Caucus and Chief of Staff in the State Senate. In nineteen ninety, she co-founded the Asian Pacific Youth Leadership Project, APYLP, a four-day program that encourages and inspires Asian-American Pacific Islander youth for public service through hands-on training that focuses on the state legislative process, political advocacy, and activism. I personally would see Georgette at many APYLP events decades later. And I'm happy that she had an opportunity to see the development of so many young leaders. Georgette was a champion for the Asian-American and Pacific Islanders. She built coalitions and was a powerful voice for the underrepresented. Didn't matter what your background or religion or race, but she fought for everyone. She served as Vice Chair of Capitol and on board such as the API Legislative Caucus Institute and the California Cultural and Historic Endowment, to which she was appointed to by the Assembly Speaker. Throughout her life, Georgette never stopped fighting to create more opportunities and political power for APIs and all of Sacramento. She will forever be in our hearts. In her life, her life's work will continue to be felt throughout generations. Even in her final time when she was fighting through her situation, she would not miss a meeting. Georgette is survived by her husband Roy Murrah, her two sons Todd and Aaron, and her grandchildren. Georgette gave so much, and I also want to thank Roy and her family for sharing Georgette with our community because she really gave it all for Sacramento. I also want to close in adjourned in memory for a dear friend and neighbor, Dr. Dean Murakami. A labor champion, an organizer, Tahoe Park neighbor, and again, a dear friend. Dean served for thirty years at the Los Rios Community College Federation of Teachers as an American River, which, at the American River College campus for the Los Rios Community College District. He joined the Psychology Department of the American River College in nineteen ninety and tirelessly advocated for public higher education in his career, the longest-serving president of his union. Statewide and throughout Sacramento, Dean served in many vital, vital roles, including Vice President for numerous labor and academic organizations, the California Federation of Teachers, the Sacramento Central Labor Council, the Faculty Association of California Community Colleges. People from all over the state, when he passed away, came to recognize him. Dean was central to secure, to securing pensions for some of our educators in twenty twelve when it was a, a difficult time. He helped navigate the Los Rios Community College Federation of Teachers through multiple economic downturns. He lobbied the, the, our, our mayor when he was pro temp aggressively, increased and pushed for support for part-time faculty, which many times are going from campus to campus, trying to just make education an opportunity. He fought for food, for the issues of food insecurity, our homeless students, our veteran students, and our undocumented students. I got to know Dean shortly after college as a young staffer, and what I can remember since that time is he always mentored and took the time and was very generous with his own personal time to provide increased leaders. and was very generous with his own personal time to provide increased leaders and create increased leaders. Dean Murakami served, uh, at the pleasure of the mayor as the, uh, as a, as a commissioner to the Measure U Advisory Commission, uh, and fought for small businesses in disadvantaged neighborhoods like Stockton Boulevard, uh, and other commercial corridors. It was a fundamental point that he wanted to make sure underserved communities were not forgotten. He's an example and a stalwart for the labor community. And within my district, he was a committed educator and engaged neighbor and helped raise money for the Hiram Johnson High School scholarships. The first one to say I'll donate to the, the scholarship bowling tournament, which everyone thought was a crazy idea, but he was committed to make sure that kids who were foster, uh, kids or, uh, and those at Hiram Johnson had a chance. Never stopped fighting for DACA students, even went with us to DC, uh, to when the Trump administration came in, um, to join the mayor and others and then this, and the regional leaders to advocate for more resources for her area. A hardcore believer in the right and the representations of working families. Dean was a fighter for all of us in Sacramento, a fighter for the API community. Dr. Dean Murakami survived by his wife, uh, Patricia Murakami, who we all, we all know from Ambrosia, and his four younger brothers, Brian Murakami, Myron Murakami, Marvin Murakami and Daryl Murakami. Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Georgette, for, uh, being such a great leader.
Eric, you really, um, I'm so glad you gave a very thorough, um, and eloquent, uh, adjourned in memory. I just want to say in closing, um, that, uh, they were two dear friends of mine as well. And I really appreciate you doing that. You know, to me, just the lessons I learned from both Georgette, um, and Dean, who are different people, of course, but they both had the quality of being fierce, principled advocates. And they were really nice and kind people at the same time. And that's, um, that's a good combination. Get you far. And, uh, they went far. So, uh, a great, good evening tonight, thorough. We tackled a lot of really important, uh, subject matter. I thank the public. I thank the city staff. I thank, uh, my colleagues and, uh, uh, until next time, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you.